Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Oshun-Nawei, the Chipewa, the Hadonoshi, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx and online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed -- excuse me -- are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect the instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, TLAB, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, TLAB, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal, OLT. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. All right, so to start, staff, do we -- or sorry, first, are there any conflicts from staff or panel members this morning?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a conflict with application number twelve one fifteen Cheltenham Avenue.
Thank you. And the reason for the conflict?
I know the agent.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any minutes to approve?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have once at a minute. September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, present was Member Sankar, Member Cassin, Member Marzari, Member Martin, and Member Fazili.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Member Sankar. And a secondor? Member Marzari, thank you. All those in favor?
Carried.
Are there any files to close?
Through you, Madam Chair. There are no files to close at this time.
Thank you. And then, do we have any deferrals this morning?
Madam Chair, we have two deferral requests in the morning. We'll start with item number ten. The address is thirty-one twenty-five Steels.
Item number ten, okay. Do we have the agent for item ten? Thirty-one twenty-five, thirty-three eighty-nine Steels Avenue East.
Can you hear me? My name is Caitlin Allen, and I'm the agent for number ten.
Thank you. Yes, we can hear you. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Can you give us the information or the details of why you're requesting a deferral?
Certainly, and thank you very much. So I am here to request a deferral of the application. We received comments from Transportation Services last Friday, and they've requested additional information to confirm the requested variances are satisfactory. And you'll note that in their memorandum as well, they are recommending deferral of the application to give time for the applicant to provide the necessary information. We've actually had some very productive conversations with Transportation Services since Friday, and they've been very responsive and helpful. And we have provided them with some more information, but we just all need more time to ensure that the material is satisfactory to them and sufficient to support the variances. So, given the momentum and the progress that's been made in the last week, I'm quite hopeful we can do this quickly and that we can bring the application back to you at one of the next CVA hearings. But we want to be able to make sure that we're all on the same page before doing so.
Thank you. Panel members, do we have any questions of the applicant? And I don't believe there's anyone here to speak to the item other than the applicant.
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I think that's it.
Thank you. So I guess we can take this into committee? Member Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move--
Microphone.
Sorry. I'd like to move deferral of the application to allow the applicant to consult with the Transportation Services about some additional information.
Thank you. Do we have a secondor? Member Sankar. All those in favor? That's carried.
Thank you, committee.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have one more deferral request in the morning. It's item number twelve one fifteen Cheltenham.
Thank you. And do we have the applicant for item twelve?
I have a conflict.
Oh.
I need to leave.
Yes. Member Marzari has a conflict, so he's leaving. Okay.
Madam Chair, Ms. Evangelista has been unmuted.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Oh, we can't really hear you. Could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members. Ida Evangelista. Is that better?
Still need more volume. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So if you could say--
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members.
State your name and address.
Ida Evangelista, fifty-three Bentford Avenue, Toronto.
And the reason for the deferral request?
There was an error on one of the variances that was mentioned for the east side. And also, in the meantime, we need to discuss the file with forestry. And we need to defer for today.
Thank you. Anyone on the panel have a question for the applicant? All right, thank you. We can take this into committee, and could we have a motion?
I can make a motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion to defer one fifteen Cheltenham Avenue to -- in order to discuss with forestry an error in a variance.
And do we have a secondor? Member Nipfel? All those in favor?
Carried.
Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any further deferrals?
Through you, Madam Chair. There are no further deferrals. We can proceed with item number one.
Thank you. Item number one. Could we please have the applicant?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is Tay Rook. I am the planner for the owners of the property at three forty-nine Davisville Avenue. I'm at eighteen Young Street.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot to read the -- what this is, an application for consent and minor variances to permit two multiplexes. The consent includes -- and variances include frontage, platform setback on the east side, side yard canopy, rear yard, rear deck setback, and east side building depth, east side yard roof eaves projection, rear yard soft landscaping. On file, we have a report from Devenge Transportation Services, Community Planning, Heritage Planning, TRCA, and we have three letters of objection. Okay, so now, if you -- applicant could proceed with the application?
Sure, Madam Chair. Proceed first of all along with the -- there's a revision that needs to be made that's related to revision of variances number seven on both parts one and two, and that relates to the roof eaves projection. So it will read now, the proposed -- so for part one, the proposed eaves projection will project zero point one meters and are zero point two meters from the west lot line. And for part two, the proposed eve projection will -- eve -- proposed eaves will project zero point one meters and are zero point two meters from the east lot line. And that was a result of conversations with the planning department. They requested those changes, and upon those revisions, planning staff was satisfied with the proposal. I'll start off with the severance itself in terms of the lot frontages that is being proposed. Currently on site, there is an existing three, two-story, three-unit apartment building on the site. You'll note that the subject site has been highlighted in red on the property data map or the area context map. And you'll find that this property itself is one of the larger frontages in the area. You'll note that the properties that have been highlighted in yellow represent those properties that are six point two five meters or less in terms of lot frontages. So in terms of the lot frontages being proposed for the subject site, it's more than consistent with the current lotting pattern. And from a consent and from Section fifty-one of the Planning Act for consent, we are maintaining the existing lotting fabric of the subject site. With regards to the setbacks for the porch, front canopy, rear deck, what that relates to is the setbacks basically between the newly proposed dwellings. And if you go to the site plan on the third slide, you'll see the green strip along between the two houses where it represents point three meters in terms of the separation distances for the front canopy, the side yard setbacks, in addition to the rear yard -- the rear decks setbacks in between the two new dwellings. You'll note that there is a variance for the front yard setback on the -- for part one, which is the house of the new dwelling on the left. And you'll see that there's a red dash line on the front. That represents the front wall of the existing building that's on site right now. So we're maintaining that existing front yard setback. And you'll note that from a front yard setback perspective, you'll note that the houses on either side have different front yard setbacks. One's closer to the street, the other one to the east is further away from the streets. So we're maintaining that consistency along the front yard setback line. With regards to the -- there's a variance related to rear landscaping area, and that is subject to part two, which is the house on the right. And if you go scroll up a little bit, there's two existing garages or an existing garage that's on the property right now. You'll note that on the right, the existing garage is slightly larger than the garage on the left. And what that is, is that that creates a bit of a deficiency in terms of landscaping at forty-seven point two nine percent. And from my submissions to the committee, I would submit that it would be indiscernible from a planning perspective and from a neighborhood perspective as well. You'll note that this is a proposal for a multi-tenant building of four units or fourplex that's being proposed on each of these newly created lots. We're adding to the housing stock. These are proposed -- these will basically present themselves to the street as single detached dwellings. You'll note that there is no variances related to FSI height. And you'll note that the exterior side yard setback are at point nine meters, which is in compliance with the zoning bylaw either side. But once again, if you go to the second slide of my presentation slides, you'll note that majority of the houses in the area do not meet the zero point nine meter side yard setback requirement within this neighborhood. I would submit to the committee that from a staff perspective, from a planning perspective, this is a more than acceptable, more than appropriate form of intensification within this area, given that this property is a bit of an anomaly in terms of lot frontage. It would create a lot frontage that is consistent with the existing lotting pattern. And in addition to that, add housing stock to the city of Toronto. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Do the panel have any questions?
I have a question.
Member Martin?
Just curious, how is the existing garage going to work? Because it looks like two-thirds is on one of the properties and one-third is on the other property.
Right, so it will be -- there will be a split common wall that would be created. In addition to that, there is a laneway at the back. You'll note. So basically, my client wishes to maintain the existing garage structure because he doesn't want to do additional construction and basically separate the two garages along the newly created lot line. And as a result of that, you have an uneven distribution of the garage for one part and then the other. So one side is larger than the other, and that results in the rear yard landscaping variance for part two.
So you're just going to put -- they're going to put up a wall, obviously, between the two?
Or just ma -- yeah, or just maintain it as is and make arrangements because my client doesn't anticipate all of the tenants will have cars. And this is located along a bus route in addition to the fact that it's very accessible for public transit. So it's more than satisfactory. It's going to be -- it will be maintained as is. He may put a party wall in between the existing garage or maintain it as is, and they will park their vehicles appropriately.
I see. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from panel members? Member Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. On the site plan, you show that there are two proposed decks, one beside each other, one in each house, and that's replicated on the second floor as well. Can you speak to what measures, if any, you're providing to have privacy between these adjacent decks? They're quite close and they're a substantial size. So I assume that there would be some privacy concerns, and I'm just interested to know what provisions you've made for that.
Through you, Madam Chair. With regards to privacy, on -- I'll call the exterior side yards of the decks on either of the properties, parts one and two, we are maintaining a zero point nine meter setback, which is by law requirement. And you'll note that the primarily -- primary deck area is more, I guess, towards the center or the newly created lot line. If the committee wishes that we provide some sort of screening fence between the, I guess, the newly created lot line in between the two dwellings, that's fine. We have no issues with that. But from a rear perspective, there's a garage and a laneway. And from the exterior side perspective, we maintain the side yard setback requirements, and there's no height variances related to this proposal.
It was specifically relative to the new lot line and the adjacency of those two decks. So you have no problem with providing some sort of a privacy screen on the -- on the side of the decks that's adjacent to the new lot line?
If you're just referring to the site plan that's on screen along that green area, along that edge, we have no issues with that, sir.
And would you be prepared to change your -- or to amend your site plans to show that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And you can provide as a condition of approval, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from panel? All right, I believe we have another speaker on this item. Paulina Arango.
Hello?
Madam Chair, we have some members in the chambers here.
In the meantime, Madam Chair, Paulina has been unmuted.
Okay, perhaps we could hear from Paulina first?
Thank you, Madam. I submitted a letter to the objection of the proposal.
Sorry, we're having trouble hearing you.
Are you able to hear me?
Now we are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So I had submitted an objection as a--
Excuse me, could you -- could you please state your name and address?
Yes, so my name is Paulina Arango. I live at three forty-nine Davisville Avenue, apartment three.
Thank you.
My mother also lives at this apartment, Adriana Villa. And she's a senior.
Okay, go ahead.
So on behalf of the tenants, particularly on unit three, my mother has lived at the address for about ten years. She's a pensioner. She has a fixed income. And it's under rent control. So as you know, the city has actually grown, and affordable housing is actually quite inaccessible, especially seniors are a very vulnerable population, and they are subject to homelessness quite often. So as a pensioner, I would like to -- my mother's, you know, mother's case, how is this project going to benefit her? She is, you know, going to be forced out of the unit. We were not informed ahead of time of the project, so there was no notice. There is -- so the signs from the street, they're not highly visible. So I'm not sure if that is objectionable. Moreover, the Ministry of Health, I will state this because this is an aging population, there is a program, an incentive to -- for seniors to age at home. This is not just something I'm making up. It actually exists. So to allow dignity and also, you know, disrupt -- the disruption or the dislocation of home where a senior has been is causing undue anxiety and chaos. So it's not something that actually we welcome. While we understand that there is a need for affordable housing in our city, we believe that the project may not be in line with the character of the neighborhood. So I did not know about this project, the actual plans. Nothing was discussed with us. You know, it's a high-density housing complex, and it's for the purposes of revenues, higher revenues and taxes. We know that because we never see the tenants -- I'm sorry, the landlords. They never really, you know, fix anything here. So that was the intention the whole time, to actually build something new. Not withstanding, they're not the only concerns. There are other tenants in the building. They will actually discuss that with you. So these are my concerns. My mother is, you know, a senior. She's been here for a long time, and she's a pensioner on a fixed rental income. And the prices -- actually, this building is a unit that is an older building. That's not subject to -- it's subject to rent control. So it's not subject to actual rent increases. So building something new, she would have first right, hopefully, to occupy a unit, but I mean, it would be at a different rental price. So if she can have some protection, if that was the case, if the unit, the building was to go ahead, we would like to request that.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Were you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? None? Okay, thank you very much. So now we have speakers in the chamber. Please state your name and address.
Good morning for everybody.
You need to turn the microphone on. Thank you.
Good morning for everybody. Okay. I am Adriana Villa, and my address is three forty-nine Davisville, apartment three. I want to say some words about that.
Sorry, just to clarify, was that your family member on the speaker previously? We only allow one speaker per address.
Three forty-nine Davisville Avenue.
Yes, sorry, per unit, I would say. There's only one speaker permitted, but if you have something particular that you want to add, we'll allow it.
I want to say some words only. I am here because I am seventy-seven years old, senior citizen, and I will be kicked out of my home. I am on fixed pension, and I will make it very difficult to find another affordable rental. The way I found out about this permit was just by the sign that was put on the window. No one talked to me or anyone. I lived here for ten years and paid my rent on time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Hermano Storti. I'm living Davisville, three forty-nine, unit two. I would like to say my concerns about this project as a tenant. Since I saw the sign from the city on the building on October twelve, by the way, the sign is very hard to read from-- By the way, the sign is very hard to read from outside the building. I tried to text the landlord to talk and to understand what is happening, but since then, I didn't receive any response. And I thought maybe I received some mail from the city, and since then, I didn't receive any mail formally, uh, talking about this as well. So I moved in 2019, and one of the reasons that I found this place is because of the rent control. Even though my rent is still hard to afford, uh, at least with the rent control, it's helped me to, helped my family and I to survive. My son Hugo, who is eight years old, attends Davidville School in French immersion, uh, and moving him to a new school, a new neighborhood will be a big impact on him, especially for the friends and the neighborhoods, his part of his life. Uh, lastly, I tried, I would like to bring it up, the issue about affordability. I make a quick research, uh, based on my size of the apartment around the neighbor, and the minimum, uh, average is $3,200 for a new rent in the neighborhood, so makes me difficult for us to stay in the neighborhood after this change. And this is it, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the speaker? None? Thank you. Next, sorry.
He's got three minutes left, could I have it?
Are you from another unit within the building?
Unit one.
That's fine, you're allowed to speak on your own.
Yes, I know, but I would like his time as well, that he didn't use.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's just the five minutes.
Do I need the microphone or not?
Yes, I think you do, because it's being recorded.
Okay, excellent. This whole thing is a travesty. I don't know how I find myself
Madam Chair, we need his name and address.
Sorry, yes, indeed, to state your name and
I beg your pardon, my name's Tim Blake. I have lived at 349 Davisville Apartment One since 1998. I have lived in this particular area of Toronto. My parents first bought a house, um, on Harwood Road, which is about three streets away in 1967. And I've lived in this neighborhood, I love it, it's where I want to retire. I'm 83 years old now, and I don't know if I'll be there much longer, but I'd like to make the most of my last, of my time here. We were never told by anybody that this was going to happen. I couldn't understand what that gentleman, I don't know who he was, but anyway. Gradually, over the last eight days, I've managed to get some information from, first phoning 311, when we saw the sign that was posted. I hope you've seen a picture of that sign, because I have a sign thing here, signed by Gail Nasbaum, who is one of the owners of the property, saying that she put the sign up there in a prominent location, which is visible from the street sidewalk. Now, I'm sorry, folks, that's not what you mean. You mean it's legible. The sign is certainly visible, I could put a beer mat in the window and you'd see it, but you can't read it. The whole point of the sign is that people going by can read the sign. This is the first problem. Now, I've never met this lady, she's owned the property for five years, I've never met her. I just get emails, texts, and, of course, the most recent one was about, what, three weeks ago, when we were informed about the new rent that comes due in, uh, the first of next year. She's also said she's, uh, gonna make sure the sign's still there. Well, I'm sorry, we had to take it down because we didn't know what it was, we didn't take it down for long, we just took it down to see what it said, because it is not legible from the street, or even from the path, which is halfway to the sidewalk, you know, you can't read it. So if there's a fine, I'll pay that. I want, I would like to live the rest of my days in, in my apartment, I, as I say, I've been there for 26 years, help me, 26 years, yeah, and, uh, the government, whether it's provincial, federal, municipal, one thing they agree on, keep the seniors in their homes, right? They all say that. We don't want them in a long-term care facility, it is cheaper to keep me in my home, get somebody to help me a bit if I need, you know, take a bath a few times a week, or feed me, or whatever the heck it is, but don't put me in a facility, keep me in my home. These people, since they bought the house in 2019, and by the way, there's nothing in anything I've read here that you're gonna tear it down, but I assume that's one of those given things that, in order to build two new properties, you have to tear down the one that's there. Sorry, I lost my train of thought there, I am 83 after all. So I wanted to, you know, live out my days i- in this, in this facility, and, uh, it's an area I know, when I first found it, by sheer luck, I found out, whoa, it's in my neighborhood, it's 1-4, no elevators, I know the neighborhood, I know the people, and lo and behold, it was rent-free, uh, rent-controlled, we should rent-free, rent-controlled. Now, the new owners, under the name of Nasbaum, actually, we were told that it, that the building had been bought by a corporation called, um, Mangold Corporation. I've never met Gail Nasbaum, apparently she's the head of this organization. We were told, and I've been told by three occasions now, that Mangold Corporation owned a whole pile of properties in the city, they don't own any, except us, and that nothing would change, we just, you know, the old landlord who sold the place, David Greenglass, just said, you're just gonna make your checks out to somebody different. And I confirmed that with one of the three owners when he moved, I said, oh, I understand you own a lot of properties, nothing changed, no, they don't own any. I, actually, I heard they own a warehouse somewhere. Now I come to the most important thing, and I hope I can do it in 42 minutes. Why weren't we told it was going to happen? There was a letter here, and thank goodness for Mr. Clapp, who told me about this, called "Public Hearing Notice," do you know what I'm referring to? You all know that, right? Now, this, I gather, was sent to all the, um, neighborhood, right, so people could say, wait a minute, and I, you know, they could get involved if they wanted to. Here's my question, why wasn't it sent to us? We live there. You think all the neighborhoods should know that they're trying to tear down our homes and it's not important to us? Excuse me? That is insane! I, this one I have here, now according to this, I have friends in the neighborhood, of course, and, uh, this is one of theirs, it belongs to, uh, Mr. William Ogg, who lives just up Bel Air, which is the vertical street going from our building. He received it on October the 9th. So, okay, fair enough, this is when the, this two-week period started, I gather.
Sir, if you could wrap up?
No, sorry, I can't. This is too important, you're kicking, you are deciding whether I'm going to be homeless. I, it's not fair. I wrote, I, I wrote down a couple of things I was gonna say, I started, uh, eight days ago, right? What I wanted to say, I tore it up, wrote it the next day, tore it up, wrote it, never occurred to me that after driving an hour away from where I live, I'd have five minutes to make a case so I shouldn't be evicted? This is the third eviction they've tried, the third one. And I guess they're gonna be successful this time, but what happens to us? Is it right to tear down a building with rent control, which is so important to the city of Toronto, just to, so they can have eight condo buildings which will probably sell for, what, million and a half each, they're gonna make a fortune out of this, but what about us? What is the point of having rent control if we can be bulldozed? I don't even know where they live, you know, but maybe they don't even live in Toronto, I have no idea. The whole thing has been very unfair. More than that, and this, I will make my last statement. When we first found out about it, we saw the sign, I got a call from Hermano in Apartment Two, oh, by the way, all of us, in case of interest, are immigrants to Canada, and I came in 1957, my dad was offered a job at the Stratford Festival, where he worked as an actor for 40 years, but that's beside the point. We're all immigrants to Canada, we've all contributed to Canada, I hope. So when this started, he saw the sign, he texted me on Saturday morning, the 12th, and said, have you seen the sign on the building? I said, what are you talking about? I just got out of the shower, you know, what he's talking about. So he'll come outside and I'll show you. So he shows me the sign, there's a sign, we're standing there looking at it, um, if you've got a picture of it, not only is it not visible for the sidewalk, which it should be according to this form drawn under the heading of Caroline Samuel N.
Sir, sir, your, your wrap-up statement, if you could provide it, please?
Yes. We, the time allotted to us is two weeks, from the time this information was sent out to the ti- to today, two weeks, right? We didn't see it till the third day. Next day was a Sunday, the next day's a statutory holiday, so that was no use. I phoned 311 on that day, they told me to contact Mr. Clapp, they then said I should also contact, contact my local couns- councillor for Ward 15. We don't have one, because councillor passed away, there's an election two weeks, I think, and we're gonna get a new councillor, great. So we start to get information, and Mr. Clapp told me that this letter had been sent out to everybody in the neighborhood. So I started to go and see my friends up on Bel Air, and that, so I have somebody else's phone. At no time have we been emailed, texted, I, 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 I'm sorry, I'm not online, I'm too old for that, I talk to people, and I should, should have more than five minutes in my future, um, whether I'm sleeping on a street, which wouldn't happen, but my future accommodation, this is what this is about. But we were treated badly, right from the word go.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. I think just to clarify, the, the notice goes to owners of property within, uh, 400 feet of the property, so I think that is probably why
I agree.
Didn't receive a notice and
I came to that conclusion, my lady, um, I don't know how to, because I've never been to a council meeting before, I did come to that conclusion. Now here we have this meeting, which is about what the owners want to do and the outcome to the renters. So the letter is just as important to the renters as it is to the owners, would you not agree? Can anybody dispute that? No, you can't, I'm, I don't think. So the letter should have gone to the renters, and the first person I asked, who lives right across the street, he cuts everybody's grass and shovels snow and stuff, I said, did you get one of these letters? Because he'd seen the sign in our window, he couldn't read it, and I asked the police officer in front of the building if he could read the sign, and he said, no, he couldn't read it.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
It's been abuse, I'm sorry.
Do panel members have any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. So we will bring the applicant back to address the comments that have been made by the public.
Through you, Madam Chair, um, I'll start with the sign, um, because it was mentioned, uh, I, we did, as per the requirements of the Committee of Adjustment, uh, the sign was posted and a picture was taken and provided to city staff, uh, at which point they were satisfied, uh, that the notice sign had been posted. With that being said, if the sign was in a location that was deemed inappropriate, staff does tell us to relocate the sign, um, in a more appropriate, more visible location. However, we never got such notice, so the sign was posted and in accordance with the timelines that was provided by the, uh, requirements of the sign posting requirements. With regards to, um, I guess, the rent control and everything related to rent, and I say this with respect to the committee, um, I'm sure that the committee is aware that, um, that matter is not, uh, where this, uh, application, um, or that, that matter is not, it should be considered at the Committee of Adjustment. With regards to the Committee of Adjustment, it's, it's with respect to the proposal that's before you, related to the variance that's before you, and the consent application, and based on that, from a planning perspective and a, uh, from a intensification perspective, uh, this is more than appropriate, and, um, I will just leave it at that, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir, no, no, you've had your time to speak, I'm sorry, we have to move on. We have a number of items to, uh- Sir.
Madam Chair, we have to restore order back, or we will adjourn, we will stand this down
Yes.
And clear the chambers if required, please.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions of the applicant further to what he just provided?
I have a question.
Thank you.
So, why was the sign not, um, positioned in a location where it would be clearly visible? Like, what was the reason for posting it somewhere that was obscured?
Uh, it was, there was no intent to post a sign that was obscured, it was posted on the window of the front main entrance, a photo was taken, a close-up shot, and a, uh, and a further shot was provided to Committee of Adjustment staff, they advised that it was satisfactory, no indication of indic- uh, saying that, uh, it should be relocated, uh, because they deemed it to be clearly visible. And so there was no in, no intent to hide the sign from anybody. It's there, it's a requirement, and we do it all the time. And, and that sign was posted by the owner, as the indicated by, uh, one of the neighbors, uh, one of the, uh, tenants.
Uh, didn't you just say, though, that the, and then planning staff drove by and said the sign was not visible, or you received, you were supposed to receive a notice or something?
No, 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 no.
Oh.
If the sign is not visible, you
Is visible.
They provide correspondence saying relocate it, and we never received that correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All right, I think we're ready to take this into committee.
I, I've had my hand up, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Ma- um, member Sankar, I am sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I do want to ask the applicant, I mean, you know, there's one thing to look at this and say, hey, it's, you know, it's, it, it, you know, is it, uh, you know, appropriate for the development of the land, and, you know, I, I might just on paper see, see this and think, um, it seems okay, but when you hear about the impact to the folks that are living there, it, it makes me question the application even further. And, um, your response and rebuttal to four people who came in who told you that, okay, so it's all right if the signs weren't posted properly, but where was the do notice, um, for them to be informed of this development? They're talking about homelessness, um, they're talking about rent increase, and all of these major aspects is actually what city council and other people are discussing for the appropriateness and intent of development in Toronto. So, so far, I could see that the variance requested, I'm not sure that it's minor because of the impact, right? I could see that it's probably appropriate for the development of the land and the general intent of the bylaw, right? But does it really meet the general intent and purpose of the official city's plan, right? And is that being maintained? And so I'm gonna ask you the question, can you share with me how this is meeting the general intent and purpose of the city's official plan, knowing that, uh, they are dealing with issues of, whether it's newcomers, you know, folks that are, uh, in need of affordable housing, um, you know, rent, uh, you know, affordable rental, uh, income, cleaning up and dealing with homelessness and matters of that? And, you know, what steps did you take to contain any of that? I know, I, let's forget the posting, but how did you consult with the community members? That's important for me. So, tell me how it meets the official plan of the city, and tell me what did you do to meet the needs of the community that's severely being impacted by this development?
Well, so, through you, Madam Chair, as it relates to the official plan, the official plan speaks to, uh, the intensification of the city, or intensification of neighborhoods, because this is a neighborhood, in a form that is, uh, appropriate and generally fits within the context of the established neighborhood. So if you look at section 2.3, 2.3.1 of the official plan, it talks of stable but not static, so neighborhoods should be stable in the sense that you propose homes or dwelling sizes or lotting patterns that is consistent with the existing pattern of development, which this is. In addition to that, you go further down in terms of intensification, you go to section 4.1.5 of the official plan, where it speaks to the development requirements of new dwellings, whether it be in the form of detached semis, townhouses, or fourplexes, and it has various criterias in them with respect to side yard setbacks, height, building mass, dwelling type, um, landscaping, um, whether or not if it's creating a new, new lotting pattern, all of which have been satisfied for this proposal. I think your biggest concern is about the tenants with, with regards to the engagement that they had. Quite frankly, and I do say, I do say this with respect from a Committee of Adjustment perspective and minor variance perspective, that is not one of the four tests of the, of the minor variances or the consent. I think I've gone through the proposal in a way that it, it established that the four tests have been met. In terms of the engagement that the owners of the properties had with the tenants, I'm not aware, I'm not sure what happened, quite frankly, because I wasn't part of that process. But what this proposal is seeking to do is utilize a property that is oversized within the context of the neighborhood into a, which is currently a three units. Um, there is rental policies, housing policies in place, uh, protection policies in place if you have six units or more, where those policies come into play, but in this case, there's only three, so that doesn't come into play. And- And this proposal is increasing the unit count to eight as from three. So an intensification from amassing, from a setback, and from whether or not if it means the intent of the official plan and the general growth plans of the official plans, it completely does. And that, I would say that to you. But in terms of engagement with, from the owners with the tenants, I wasn't privy to it, I wasn't part of it, and I have no idea what had happened with that, and I can't really even comment on it on that matter.
Okay, thank you for that. That's fair enough that you weren't part of it. But I do want to let you know that there are various aspects of the Toronto's city of official city plan, and some of those actually address things that are around housing and homelessness. It also addresses 2020 to 2030 action plan, which is aligned around homelessness and creating supportive housing on all of those things. I mean, it's not the same thing that you're doing, but there is that sort of inclusionary understanding that we won't try to make things a little bit worse. And in terms of housing protection, you know, there is converting and demolishing and replacing items, I'm still having to look at a little bit more closely at the rental housing demolition and conversion by law. And, you know, how this might fit into affordable housing for people that are going to be impacted. And so when you look at that growth management of these mixed-use developments, it, you know, I'm thinking that, you know, there's a little bit more to this than maybe I even have the understanding to state, but something just does not feel right, that they have not even been consulted in advance. You've got four confessions here that said, you know, "I'm about to be homeless," and "What's happening?" We weren't even given advance notice. That's very worrisome. And again, if this does not feel like it fits with the intent and purpose of the city's official plan, then I can't deem this as minor. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you. Any further questions, panel? I think we'll take this into committee for discussion and a motion. Member Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a difficult application because of the issue of homelessness, potential homelessness, and people not being able to afford rent. But there is nothing that I can see that is before us that deals with those issues. I do not agree with my colleague that the official plan deals with homelessness in the way that she's mentioned. Those are currently studies, and clearly they're necessary explorations. But at the present time, what we have before us doesn't speak to those issues. It doesn't say that the way in which this matter was handled is appropriate. It isn't. The people that currently live in the building should have been consulted, and the application should have been discussed at length with them. It wasn't. But as you yourself indicated, Madam Chairman, the obligation is to provide notice to landowners at the present time. And again, that's a condition that we're working with. Given what's before us, given the constraints of the process, I frankly don't have a lot of difficulty with the application that's before us. Doesn't mean I don't share my colleague's concern about people losing their homes. But what's before us, I think, is reasonable application for variances, a reasonable application for consents. The consents clearly support a existing pattern of development, and the variances, I think, are relatively minor. So I would be in support of this application for those reasons.
And are you willing to make a motion to that effect?
I will try, because I have to pull together the various other conditions. I would move approval of the consent application subject to, I believe, the fairly standard development, engineering, and transportation consent conditions. I would move approval of the variance conditions subject to modifying variance number seven in both applications, and for providing privacy screens along the east side of Unit 349A and the west side of Unit 349B on the second floor deck. And the privacy screen needs to be 1.5 meters high and opaque of some substance. And from my notes, those are all the conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Marziani?
I want to add the point, I really sympathize with the tenants. It's a very hard situation to make a decision at this point. But as my colleague mentioned, we are dealing with the variances before us, and I agree that this is meeting the four tests, so I second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, I can't see her.
Nadini Sankar Peralta, opposing.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see the screen. So that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay. A five-minute break? Okay, we are back. And on item two, 58 to 60 McNairn Avenue. This is a consent to sever into two residential lots, interior alterations to the existing two-story duplex, third-floor addition and conversion to a fourplex. The variances are for building type, building depth, floor space index, front yard setback, rear yard setback, landscape strip, and visitor parking spaces. On file, we have a community planning report, heritage preservation services report, engineering and construction report, transportation services report, memo from Metro Links, a TRCA report, and seven letters of objection. Do we have the applicant here? I believe he's online.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the panel, Franco Romano, Action Planning Consultant, 321 Lake Shore.
Thank you. I think we want to start this item by asking you whether you've had time to review the transportation services report regarding an easement over the properties.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have, and we've been working with transportation staff in preparing the easement and giving them the documents.
So I believe the concern is that because the easement wasn't applied for as part of the consent application, the committee isn't able to consider the application without that. We can't make it a condition. I know it's already been deferred once, but it makes it problematic from our point of view to deal with the application.
Yes, thank you for that comment, Madam Chair. The owners again are working on private easement. It would not be a consent-related easement that we're working with Transportation Department on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know enough about private easements, I'll be honest with you. If you elect to, if this gets approved and this condition is on, I just want the applicant to be aware that if he can get Transportation to sign off on that condition, then I can't stop him. Although the more traditional way obviously is to, easements are considered consents in the Planning Act. If, I know he mentioned a private easement, if that is to transportation satisfaction because it is their condition, then that's a different matter if it is a private easement. Whether it's registered on title, I don't, again, I don't know enough about it. But proceeding as such and relying on it to be a private easement, if that's what the applicant had mentioned, and being confident that transportation and engineering can sign off, should you choose to add this condition, should you choose to prove the consent, would be up to the agent and owner to satisfy and be aware of.
So, Mr. Romano, do you understand and agree with that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The owner does understand and is in the process of securing Transportation's sign off on that private easement. Thank you.
Okay, so we will proceed on this item. We do have some members of the public who wish to speak to this, so if you could provide us a brief presentation of the application, and you have five minutes.
Absolutely, yes. Yes, if staff can bring up my supporting presentation material, please, and go to slide number three. The, the application deals with a triangular-shaped parcel of land. You'll see along McNairn, there's a 5.83-meter lot, front lot line, but it's an actual 8.63-meter lot frontage. A lot frontage and lot area that's required is 7.5 meters and 225 square meters, and the proposal is in excess of that. It's 8.72 meters and 39.6 meters in frontage, 302.5 and 451.9 square meters in lot area. And as I'll show you shortly, the lauding pattern will, that's being proposed here fits well within the, the surrounding context, including what's found on the adjacent street. The building is remaining as is. There is no new construction to expand the building envelope. So the variances that are being applied by the zoning examination, they are individual variances. So part one has its own list of variances related to what the zone examiner is identifying as the entire building. Part one in part two, as if it's one lot of an apartment building. But the variances for front yard setback, 1.32 meters, you'll see that circled in the lower left, up against Young Boulevard, that's the existing setback. The building depth on part two, on the right-hand side, that blue line that goes from where the front setback is of number 56 to the east, the neighbor, to the rear wall of the existing building, that's a technical depth. The building depth is actually just over 16 meters, and the building length is just over 16 meters. That's the existing condition. So there's no new building depth that's being proposed here, no new front yard setback that's being proposed here, no new rear yard setback that's being proposed here. You'll see that the building rear yard setback from left to right, to part one to part two, is currently existing 6.95 and 7.05. So everything that we see on the site today in terms of the building is, is existing, the proposal is to convert from a duplex to a fourplex within each building. Both buildings have individual addresses, sorry, both, both halves of the building have individual addresses. They have individual separate entrances. There is no common hallway, there is no common interior space, there is no connection between the, the two halves. So this is more, the severance is more of a technical one that deals with the, what we actually see the building on, in place on site. And the variances deal with individual parts, but the zone examination is saying that this is one building on two lots, and therefore is an apartment building, which I think is a flawed interpretation, but we're going with what the zone examiner has identified. You'll see also the landscape strip in the upper left where there's an oblong blue circle, that's, that's an existing condition, 0.3-meter landscape strip. So the, on the right-hand side, the visuals that you'll see here, 12A and 12 Young Boulevard, have very similar semi-detached with separate entrances. This is not being treated as one building on, on two lots. So we submit that what is being proposed here is minor nature in terms of the variances. Go to slide number four. Please, you will see that in blue, there are lots that have a lot frontage smaller than what is being proposed, and I see the, the slide's not moving on, on my screen, so I think it's important to, it's limited to the five minutes that we actually see what it is that, that I'm hoping to respond to here. If staff can bring us to slide number four, please? Okay, I'm still not seeing, still not seeing the movement there. Thank you kindly, appreciate that. Slide number four, you'll see in blue lots that have a lot frontage less than 8.72 meters, which is the, the smaller of the two lots that are being proposed, it's very much in keeping. Now, slide number five, we'll see a building footprint that is permitted as a right in green, but in the lower left, you'll see the official plan permits multiplexes, permits apartment building, and on the right-hand side, the zoning bylaws that applies to multiplexes, the floor space index would not apply. You'll see that there's a number of performance standards that the zoning, that the proposal complies with, as if it were treated as it should be and as the public hearing notices say is a multiplex. So I submit that the applications for variances are minor, and the consent satisfies all the consent criteria. Thank you kindly, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Romano, I believe the application was deferred on August the 15th, and the purpose of the deferral was for you to meet with Planning Department. We still have a negative report from Planning on the variances. Can you tell me what, if anything, was achieved through those discussions with Planning?
Yes, through your Madam Chair, thank you for that question. So this, this is a little bit of a delicate situation, but what I'll convey to you through your Madam Chair is that Planning Staff initially reached out to the, the architect, the formal agent on the file, saying that, that we don't think this is an apartment building, so we want to talk to the zone examiner to see what could be done in terms of that interpretation. And then Planning Staff came back and said, "Well, the zone examiner is not budging, they're still going to say that this is one building on two lots, and it's an apartment building, so that variance is going to stay." And in order to remove that variance, Planning Staff suggested, "Why don't you just do secondary suites? So remove the, the individual apartment units and do secondary suites." And so basically a repackaging of the proposal, basically keep everything exactly the same as it is. There is no discussion or concerns relating to building depth, setbacks, floor space index, et cetera. Staff came back and said, "Turn it into secondary suites with two primary..." So the secondary suite is basically, you have a, a primary unit, and then everything else is, is secondary. And, you know, that, that would involve some, some changes inside the building, clearly, and it would not result, and it would require a primary occupant, and then all of the other units would be secondary to that primary occupant. So that was not in keeping with what the owner is looking to do, which is create the individual rental units without having to have a primary owner occupy the, any one of the units, the building. And so the, we agreed to disagree with Planning Staff and said that, you know, we're, we're basically talking about the same building, same intensity of use, but our, our approach in terms of having it as, as a, two multiplexes that are attached, is, has merit and is consistent with the official plan, which is part of my slide presentation.
The plan examiner still holds its apartment building, though, is that correct?
Yes, one building on two lots. So for all intents and purposes, the zone examiner could look at this. Because this lot, in terms of lot frontage and lot area combined, could be split into three, zoning bylaw compliant lots. And the zone examiner would basically say you could have three attached units on this, on three lots, and they'll treat it as one building, one apartment building on those three lots, which I, I just believe is a flawed, a flawed interpretation. I know that the city will get development charges for an apartment building, they will not get development charges for a multiplex, and, you know, the owner's happy to pay development charges for an apartment building interpretation, but we believe that this is still a multiplex development.
So your variance number four, sorry to belabor, just to get it clear, your variance number four, your request for variance number four, is to have this land or to allow an apartment building to be built here. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, it is not correct. There is no apartment building that is being constructed. If you look at the purpose of the application, purpose of the application is to convert the, the, from a two-story duplex to a fourplex.
Then what is the purpose of variance number four?
The purpose of variance number four is to appease the zone examiner and the zone examiner interpretation that this is one building on two lots and constitutes an apartment building. It's a technical variance, to deal with the zone examination, but the zone examiner, if this was one building on, if this was one building, why do we have two zoning notices? Why do we have two public hearing minor variance notices? We should only have one, but we don't have one because this is a multiplex that is being interpreted as an apartment building, two lots.
So, I, I guess what I'm concerned with is, assume this gets approved, which is a large assumption, but if it were to get approved as it is before us, I'm not exactly sure what variance number four actually says. Basically, it says that an apartment building is not a permitted use. Well, that's what the, the examiner already said, so how does, how does variance number four help you? Basically, wouldn't, wouldn't you have to have a variance that says that what you're proposing isn't an apartment building, but that isn't what this says? Or maybe that's what you assumed it said, and maybe I'm reading it differently.
That's, that's, I'm going to have to pull up the zoning notice here. Be with me one sec. That is exactly what the zoning notice says. Proposed building type, apartment building is not a permitted residential building type in the R-zone. So the, that is a transcription directly from the zoning notice, and then through your Madam Chair, I know that this, the question is being asked of me because I'm on the floor, but the zone examiner is the one that, that authored that text, and I think that the, the, the purpose of the application, which identifies it as a conversion from a duplex to a fourplex, and by itself would ensure that it is a fourplex and not an apartment building. And certainly, there can be a condition attached that, that, that reflects the existing site plan or the existing plans on file with the Committee of Adjustment, and the plans on file state on almost every page, certainly on the site plan, that it is a conversion from a duplex to a fourplex.
No, I, I completely-
So those would provide-
I completely understand what, what you're attempting to do, and, and I appreciate as well that this is a really complex issue. I just, and I won't belabor, I don't understand what variance four does for anybody. It doesn't say anything. It basically reiterates that you can't have an apartment building, but it doesn't say anything about your application, so I'm, I, I remain confused by variance number four. So perhaps in the discussion, that will become clearer.
Any other questions?
I have one question. The requirement for the visitor parking is shown on both variance notices, I believe, and I'm just wondering, is that for the total site of two lots, or is that, do you really need four spaces per section of the building, whatever we're going to call it?
Again, thank you for that question, Madam Chair. It is the four spaces on the, on the current property as it sits today, so it's not four each. And again, as a multiplex, there is no parking requirement.
Because my concern is if we were to approve it and the variances individually, then there would be the requirement for four spaces on each part. I mean, maybe it should be part of the easement? Perhaps it's something that's part of the easement. Does that make sense?
The, the zone examiner, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The easement will allow both, both halves to use the four, the four parking spaces. Again, the, the zone examiner is treating, has identified that single variance to apply to both parts because they're treating the, the one building as an apartment building.
Okay, that makes sense then. Okay, I just wanted to clarify so you wouldn't get stuck down the road having to provide eight parking spaces, which wouldn't be possible, I don't believe, so, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No? So I guess we have at least one speaker. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on this item? Item number two, fifty-eight and sixty McNairn? No? So online, I believe we have a speaker.
Gordon Ross has been unmuted, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ross, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Gordon Ross, I live- Thank Madam Chair and committee members for the opportunity to present my views about the minor variance applications for fifty-eight and sixty McNairn Avenue today.
Sorry, Mr. Ross, I think we, we dropped your, we, the audio for a minute, so we didn't get your full name and address. Could you just restate that, please?
Ross, and I live at twenty-nine Rook Avenue in North York. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, but you seem to be cutting out every few seconds.
I apologize for that. Since the meeting started at ten o'clock, and I had removed my earbuds to speak directly into the computer microphone in order to solve for that. Am I still breaking up?
You seem okay now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hey. I'd like to thank Madam Chair and the committee members for the opportunity to present my views about the minor variance applications for fifty-eight and sixty McNairn Avenue. I had the chance to review the applications and staff reports, including the most recent staff report recommendation dated October seventeenth by Adam Nagy, the Assistant Planner. I took a great deal of time researching and preparing my letters of objection, the most recent being October ninth. And as a result, there's a great deal of information in my letter, but for today's hearing, I'd like to focus on what I believe to be the two core minor various requests, and that is the proposal to change the property zoning to apartment building and the maximum floor space index for the proposed severed lots at fifty-eight and sixty. The reason I want to focus on these two requested variances is because they are not minor in nature. They do not represent an appropriate or desired- represent an appropriate or desirable use of the property. They're not consistent with the general purpose city zoning code and bylaws, or the character of the neighborhood, which is both unique and desirable, as reflected by the value and quality of the properties. Let's talk to the first one, the minor variance request to change property zoning from residential to apartment building. And we've had some discussion about that in the initial presentation by Franco Romano and questions by the committee. Old Orchard Property Development is proposing conversion of an existing legal non-conforming residential building into an apartment building, a third-story addition, which has largely been completed, committee, without a building permit and completing significant interior alterations. Exception number 604 in the bylaw indicates that site-specific provision, which states that an apartment building is not a permitted building type for this property. The provision applies to the majority of properties within the interior of the Bedford Park neighborhood, a neighborhood mainly comprised of low-density single Looking to rezoning the property to apartment building in the middle of this residential area does not respect the character of the neighborhood, does not conform to the zoning or bylaws, and is not in keeping with the intent of Toronto's official plan. If we move to the second point, which is the floor space index, the zoning bylaw number 569-2013 permits a maximum floor index, FSI, of 0.6 in this neighborhood. Old Orchard Property Development is proposing an FSI of 1.36, let me repeat that, 1.36 for 58 McNairn Avenue, and 0.92 for 60. A McNairn.
You're breaking up again, sir.
It's 0. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Floor space index of 1.36 for 58 McNairn is 0.76 times greater than the zoning allows for lot coverage, a staggering 127 allowable FSI. If we go to 60 McNairn, that increase is 0.32 times greater than the zoning allows, or a massive 53% more than the maximum allowable. The reason for the unprecedented property density request is the additional floor space represented by the third floor addition to the already legal non-conforming building. I've done my due diligence and attempted to find comparable residential FSI on the City of Toronto website. I could not find a single example of anything remotely approaching 1.36. And as a result, I believe approval of minor variance A0208/24NY and A0209 will create a dangerous precedent, not only for this neighborhood, but for all residential neighborhoods. This is especially true for lots located within residential neighborhoods and not on designated major or arterial streets. And if approved, I believe that other developers will look to this precedent in their own plans for neighborhood developments across the city, having a dramatically negative effect on the character of Toronto's unique network of neighborhoods. Based on, I recommend the Committee of Adjustment deny the application, and my recommendation is supported by the North York District Community Planning Staff Report, which also recommends refusal of the applications based on the fact that they failed to satisfy the fourth test set out in Section 45, Bracket 1 of the Planning Act.
Thank you.
I make several other points in my letter of objection, which I urge the committee to consider in their decision. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to share my views as a concerned neighbor today.
Thank you, sir. And we do have your letter on file, so we have reviewed it. Do we have staff, do we have any other speakers on this item? No. Okay, so we'll get the applicant back on to address the comments made by the resident.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Mr. Ross for participating in your, in your comments. So this is, the proposal here is not zoning change. The proposal is seeking to convert from a duplex to a fourplex within the existing building. So there's no new construction here, really in terms of the proposed submission and seeking a multiplex and not an apartment building. So it's not a new building, it's not a new building type, or a new form of development. But that would be out of keeping with either the street or the neighborhood. I've shown in my visuals that the front elevation is particularly similar to other dwellings, including semi-detached. It's a difference is for some of the visuals, because they didn't show every property within the neighborhood or on the street, is that there is a third floor built into the roofline. And you'll see on the building permit drawings that the third floor does present itself in the, in the front elevation for the, for the building. And the floor area associated with that third floor is what triggers a FSI. But again, the FSI is not contributing to height, mass, or scale. It's all within the permitted building height, as you saw in that slide number five, I believe it was, of my, in slide six of my visuals, terms of building height. The proposed building height is just over 10 meters, and the permitted is 11-meter building height. In terms of the mass values and scale, it's all permitted by the zoning bylaw or the building permit. There's nothing nefarious that's being conducted here. And really, the interior space is what is being counted towards FSI. And if properly reviewed as a multiplex, which is what it is, there would be no floor space index that applies to the subject lands. Subject to any questions, Madam Chair, I still submit that the variances are minor in nature. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify for the residents, the, there is no increase to the footprint of the building. It's the existing building with the third floor addition being incorporated into a new roof structure, I suppose is what you say. And there's no variances for height on this application, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair, that is correct. And the building permit does allow for that third floor, the structure to be there. It was a matter of the interior floor space that is, that is being counted, as floor area.
Thank you. Any further questions, panel members of the applicant? Ms. Martin?
I, I guess I'm a little confused because you're, you've already, apparently you've already started construction or finished the third floor of the building, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, that is not correct. There is no third floor living space within that building. There are, there is a building permit for alterations to the building, but the third floor is not being constructed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, are we ready to take this into committee? All right, we're in committee. Any comments or anyone with a motion? Perhaps we start with comments and the conundrum of the apartment building versus a multiplex. Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've still, I'm looking at the public notice for the variances, and I don't understand how the following, the proposed building type apartment building is not a permitted residential building in this zone, in our zone. I still do not understand how if that variance, if that's a variance, if that's approved, how that tells me that what we've got before isn't an apartment. I, I am really struggling with what the wording of variance number four is intended to do. And maybe the Deputy Secretary of Treasury wishes to weigh in on this. With, I don't have difficulty with the application per se, but this issue of whether it is or isn't an apartment building, and the fact that the planning department was concerned that it was an apartment building and, and still feels it's an apartment building, somehow prompted this variance proposal. And I don't understand the proposal at all.
I can perhaps add a little my understanding of the application. I think that the zoning examiner has determined that for the purpose of the bylaw, it should be deemed as an apartment building and not as a multiplex, because I don't believe there's the definition of a multiplex that's semi-detached, as in this case. And so in order to get the application approved, they need that variance for an apartment building, despite the fact that the building isn't changing. What's there, other than to intensify the use within?
So should it say then that the proposal is deemed to be an apartment building?
I'm not sure about that, but I think that the committee could put a condition on to say that it reflects the site plan and elevations and the existing building that's there, as opposed to just permitting an apartment building as a minor variance to the bylaw, which would allow any version of an apartment building to be built, if that's your concern.
Well, my concern is if four is, if variance number four is approved, I don't know that it does anything. It basically recites what the examiner said, that you can't have an apartment building in our zone, but doesn't say anything about this project. It doesn't say anything about this building. It doesn't say anything about this application. It's just, it's reciting the bylaw. And I don't understand why, what use that variance would be.
I think that the use of that variance would be to permit an apartment building for the sake of zoning interpretation. I think that's the only point of it.
Then, then I think we should say that, because I don't think it's clear.
I'm wondering if the wording of a, of a motion could include something to that effect, if, if it were to be considered for approval.
Through you, Madam Chair, you can change the wording of the variance once it went out, once it goes on a public notice. The wording that is taken or that you see before you is lifted directly from the zoning review. It has been interpreted as such by the zoning examiner, and if approved, will be continued to be interpreted as such at the building permit stage.
I, I don't think that we would probably want to get into semantics on wording as well. And I do share my colleagues' concerns about the application as well.
Thank you. Other comments, concerns?
So I have a question from my colleagues. If, if the applicant was demolishing the existing building and build two new buildings, and then each building contains a fourplex, then that wouldn't be an apartment building, correct?
From my understanding, no, if they were separated.
Okay.
Which would be permitted, I think, from the zoning. I think the other thing that I heard from the applicant was that if these were considered as multiplexes, there would be no FSI requirement. The FSI kicks in because it's being considered an apartment building. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll take a stab at it. I'm very open to being stopped and told that I missed something. I don't have a difficulty with the application itself. I think that I'm pleased to see the existing housing fabric retained and worked with rather than being torn down and, and rebuilt. I think that this is an approach that, in terms of problems for the neighborhood and, and difficulties of construction and, construction and road blockages and all, I think this is a good solution. I personally don't have any difficulty with the consents. I think that the, the consent applications are reasonable, subject to the, the conditions that planning has, has placed before us. The variances, I understand, thank you to the Deputy Secretary of Treasury, that we can't change the wording of a variance. But I'm, I remain concerned that variance number four doesn't, in my view, mean anything. But I would recommend approval of the variances, subject to variance number one being changed as per the planning department report, so that variance number one of the application and for 60 McNairn and number three for 58 McNairn be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the Committee of Adjustment and attached to the planning department report. There are transportation conditions and engineering conditions as well for the consent, and, and my motion would include all of those. I would
And can we add the planning conditions for consent, the community planning conditions for consent?
Yes, I put those
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear.
The only other thing I would suggest is, is a clarification that you, Madam Chairman, suggested that it is the understanding of the committee that for the purposes of the review of this application, it is deemed to be an apartment. Is that inappropriate? No, that's not a, can you help me with how we can clarify that issue?
I'm, I can't, because I'm unsure about the concern, because it's already been deemed by, or interpreted by the, by Toronto buildings as an apartment. That's why the variance four is present at that time.
And it can go, it can go forward with four in, that, then it's fine.
It can go forward as, as presented if approved.
Yeah, okay.
With the variances listed.
Okay.
But just sort of, through you, Madam Chair, I just want to confirm, the member's motion only specifically mentioned the minor variances. We're considering a consent and a minor variance. Just for clarity with your motion.
I, I actually also approved the consent with the planning conditions, or recommended that. I'm fine then, if, if that's what's understood by that condition, then that would be my motion. And I hope that's clear. Can you add more? Yeah, the conditions of planning.
Thank you. And we have a seconder, Ms. Martin. All those in favor? So that's three, and opposed? Oh, sorry, that's unanimous, thank you.
No.
Nope. Sorry, just to clarify, Member Sankar, was that, were you in favor or opposed? Because there might have been a delay there.
Yes, I was in favor.
In favor, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So that is approved.
Thank you, Madam, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, item three.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
One moment. So this is an application for a new two-story detached dwelling with front porch and rear terraces. We have variances for coverage, platform size, front yard setback, rear yard setback, platform encroachment, eve projection. I believe that is all. And on file, we have a community planning report and a memo from Metrolinks. So could we have the applicant state your name and address?
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Addison Milne Price. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services located at 87 Skyway Ave here on behalf of the owners.
Thank you. And do you have any Thank you, and do you have any changes to make to the application?
Yes, I, I do have several changes that I'd like to make, including the elimination of one of the variances, so I will just go through the public notice sequentially and, and speak to each variance.
Thank you.
So, variant, of course, variance one, lot coverage has remained unchanged. Variance two, the area of the rear second-story balcony has been reduced from 37.38 square meters to 10 square meters. Variance three, the front yard setback has remained unchanged. Variance four, the rear yard setback has remained unchanged. Variance five, the rear yard deck setback encroachment has been reduced from 5.09 meters to 3 meters. Variance six and seven, the roof eve projections have remained unchanged. Variance eight, the rear balcony projection into the rear yard setback has been eliminated. And variances nine and 10, the side yard setbacks have both been increased from 1.1 and 1.11 meters to 1.2 meters.
And is, just, just for clarification, we have a Jesse Saleni as well, as an agent? Is that, that's an agent associated with the application?
Madam Chair, that is the architect, and he made the, the application. I am the agent on his behalf, along with the homeowners.
Thank you. And do we have any members of the public here in the audience to address this application? No? Any online? No. Okay, thank you. So, members, do we need a presentation on this one? No? So unless you have something to, that you want to add to the application, the members have indicated we don't need a presentation, and we're ready to go into committee and make a decision on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that this is a straightforward application. The one thing that I will add, just for the committee members' knowledge, is that the planning staff is satisfied with the revisions that we have made, and they no longer have any concerns with this proposal.
Thank you. So we'll go into committee then, members?
I can make a motion?
Okay. Mr. Marziani?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think as, as the applicant mentioned, it's a straightforward application, and I'm happy that the applicant worked with the planning staff, so I'd like to put forward a motion to approve this application as amended with no other condition.
Thank you. Do we have a seconder for that? Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? That's unanimous? Thank you. Your application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll see you this afternoon.
Okay. All right, item four, 182 Hendendra Avenue.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee. My name is Randall Dickey, Urban Growth Inc. My address is 446-1111 Davis Drive in Newmarket, and I am the authorized agent for the owner.
Thank you. Just one moment, I just want to read out what the application is for. We have an application to construct a new dwelling. We have variances for building length, east side yard, west side yard, and coverage. On file, we have a memo from urban forestry recommending denial, and I believe that is all that we are dealing with on this one. So perhaps, Mr. Applicant, you can start with your comments on the urban forestry memo.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As, as noted, there was no planning staff or transportation staff reports or objections. I am aware of the forestry memo dated October the 15th, specifically referring to variance number one being the building length recommending refusal. I, I obviously, we do not agree with this. We're asking that, that committee consider the variances on their merits today. There was no planning department objection. With respect to trees on the property, I would first point out that there are a total of nine bylaw-covered trees on the property. Seven of them, seven of them are protected with this proposal. There's only two that are requiring some form of permit. One tree, which is at the, the northwest back corner of the proposal, that is the private tree that would be impacted by variance number one, the building length. I've already talked with the owner and our designer, and we feel that we may be able to make some modifications to the building footprint at that corner that might help to reduce the impact on that tree. The owner's willing to do so, but that would require some discussion with forestry. So if the variance were to be granted today, we still need to talk to forestry, and if that building length perceivably was reduced at the back west corner, then the variance would still stand. It would still be acceptable and appropriate. So I'm asking that the committee grant the three variances, or the four specific variances requested today. We are agreeable to the conditions. We may be able to go and speak directly with forestry. We do have some design ideas that might help ameliorate the situation. The other tree that is of concern to forestry is the street tree at the front of the property, at the southeast corner of the property. That is a very large tree. The existing driveway already is within that tree protection zone. We do not see how that tree could be preserved. Vehicular access needs to be provided to the property. So the design has been done in such a way that the other street tree is protected, but these two street trees in the front of the property essentially physically block access to the entire property, which would potentially preclude any access. So we, we're willing to have discussions with forestry to see if we can come up with some alternative designs that might address some of forestry's concerns. But I would also note that the variances before you today, none of them have a direct connection to the street tree that is proposed to be removed. So it's my submission that I would ask committee to grant all the variances. We are agreeable to the conditions of forestry for the private tree and the street tree, and that would allow us to have some discussions with forestry on how we may be able to address at least some of their comments. So those are my submissions. Thank you very much. I would be pleased to try to address any other questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. I think we have a question for Mr. Nipfel for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dickey, can you, can you refer to, I wonder if, could we get the site plan up on the screen, and can you clarify which is the tree that forestry is suggesting, that the variance with regard to length is going to hamper? Because I, I don't see the connection. Is it the one at the, at the very back of the property?
It's through you, Madam Chair. It is, the cursor is very close to it. If it could move a little further to the right.
The little, the little one to the, whoa, not, not that one?
No, go to the right. Go to, right there.
That one, right?
That tree there.
That one.
That one there.
And it's a mulberry?
Yes. I believe it is a white mulberry. There's some discrepancy on what the tree protection zone should actually be, and we also feel that maybe if we did a little bit of reworking of the rear main wall in that area, that might help to preserve that tree.
I, I think that's, I think that's quite reasonable. Your proposal is that the, the variances get approved today. If forestry still has a concern with variance one jeopardizing that particular tree, they don't really have any kind of way of implementing their concerns. Do you have a solution?
Well, as I say, I don't have an objection to the, the forestry condition requiring a permit, which forces the owner to sit down with forestry to try to address the situation. Right now, I'm not sure exactly what the proper dimension of the tree protection zone. I'm not sure if the committee wants to go into great amount of details on tree protection zones, but I think that there is room for a discussion with the forestry department to try to resolve their concern, which possibly may allow that tree to be preserved.
Is the, is a deferral, is that an appropriate response to allow you the time, or does that impact your timeframe to a really difficult point of view?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to a deferral, but I, I take the position that I think the variances are clear enough right now that they could stand on their own. With the two conditions being imposed requires the owner to sit down with forestry on both of those trees. I think there are ways to preserve the private tree in the backyard. I'm not that confident about the, the street tree in the front yard, but a deferral is an option, but then it would require another notice and another hearing. So I leave that to in the committee's hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, through you, can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, if I could just ask a question, it's going to be directed to Deputy Lamb and team. If we were to approve this, how would we word or go about wording the forestry piece if, if we want it to be subject to forestry, but should it only be conditions number one and two? Or should it just say conditional to approval with forestry, and that will drive them to speak with forestry? I mean, I take to heart that he doesn't want this sort of deferred, and I think that there is room to work on this. How would we, how could that be done in a way that doesn't impact negatively on either forestry or the applicant?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you very much for that question. Well, we're going to put the denial memo up, and usually in a denial memo, it has a line that says if, should committee approve this application? Through you, Madam Chair, it's up on the screen. It starts with the sentence, "If despite urban forestry's recommendation..."
So forestry is recommending, if we were to approve it, that it would be subject to condition one and two?
Okay.
So...
So if that's the case, Madam Chair, I can make a motion if needed.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, we don't have any members online to speak to, or residents online to speak to this, correct? No, thank you. Just wanted to clarify, I wasn't sure I asked the question. Do, before anybody makes a motion, does anyone have any other questions of the applicant? Okay, so we can go into committee, and if Member Sankar would like to make a motion, that would be great.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I, I think that the agent or applicant has gone through very much explaining this application in detail, that I do believe it meets the four tests, even with the explanation and the sensitivity to which they're going about wanting to preserve that white mulberry tree. I think that's commendable and being open to working with forestry on this. I, I think that, that holds a lot of weight for me. So I'll put forward a motion to approve this application, and I'm going to make it subject to forestry condition number one and two only.
Thank you, and we have a seconder, Mr. Nipfel? All in favor? That's unanimous, carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number five, 712 Eglington Avenue East. This is an application to construct a new three-story, fourplex rental dwelling. We have variances for side yard to a rear platform, front yard setback, side yard for a fourplex, and exterior stair encroachment. On file, we have a cover letter, photos, tree plans, community planning staff report, four letters of objection, a support petition with 105 signatures, a Metrolinks memo with conditions regarding warning clauses, and we have a forestry conditions. So if the applicant could come forward and state your name and address?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Christian Cham, I'm, I'm the planner and agent for the owners of the Planning Agency Inc., and my address is Suite 138 at 157 Adelaide Street, West Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you. Do you have any changes to make to the application?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do. So pursuant to discussions with planning staff, as we received the report last Thursday on the deadline for the submissions to the committee, planning staff in the report recommended the revisions to variances number one and three for side yard setback for the platform of 0.3 meters, and as well a side yard setback of the proposed fourplex at 0.3 meters. So I respectfully submit to the committee to revise those two variants in consideration of staff's recommendations of 0.3 meters each for variances one and three.
Thank you. And I do believe we have a number of, sorry?
So, yeah, so I'd just like to speak to the Metrolinks condition. One of the conditions of approval in, under 1A, if staff can pull up that condition, states that the developer should confirm whether we will initiate construction only after the light rail's substantial completion. As everybody is well aware, there is no set date as to when that light rail transit is going to be substantially completed, so I'm prepared to request on my client's behalf that at least that condition 1A not be tied to a condition of approval should the application be approved, because we simply don't know when that light rail transit line is going to become operational or substantially completed. I've been having discussions with Metrolink's staff on this, and they have not answered the question, and they told me that it's going to take at least another two weeks for them to come back to me with what exactly that means pursuant to condition 1A. So I would respectfully ask that should this condition, these conditions be considered, that 1A not be imposed? That would have some serious implications to the provision and construction of, of what is proposed in terms of rental housing.
Okay, and I believe you have to submit information to Metrolinks as well about your construction plans and impacts on the, on the potential LRT right away, anyway, as part of condition two.
That's correct.
And, and if they...
There's no disagreement with that, Madam Chair.
Okay. I think if Metrolinks were, had a concern with it, they would certainly be indicating that through that further review. Okay, we will take that under consideration. Okay, we will take that under consideration. Normally, Metrolinks are just advisory, but in this case, because the property is located on Eglington Avenue East, the Metrolinks conditions need to be considered and applied as, as applicable. So we'll wait on that one, we'll park that for a minute, and we will ask for a presentation on it, because we have a number of people here to, or online to speak to this.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair.
So you have five minutes.
There are four variances sought in this application, west side yard building setbacks, recessed platform setbacks. Just like to note that that platform setback is to not an above-grade platform, but a platform that's the amenity area for the lower-level unit, west side yard exterior step back, and the front yard building setbacks. Just like to note as well is that urban forestry has confirmed that they do not object to the approval of the minor variances, and that the preservation of the tree in the backyard should not be a barrier at the COA stage. I'd just like to also note that revised plans have been sent showing the removal of the rear parking pad and elements of the rear walkway in order to further address urban forestry's concerns. I do also note that they suggest that we have a discussion with urban forestry after to further provide protection of that rear honey locust tree. So the proposal is for a three-story, four-unit rental building, including a rear basement unit walkout. The above-grade building area is 321 or so meters square with a compliant building length of 70 meters, compliant building height of 12 meters. Each of the two bedroom units are approximately 107 meters squared, about 1,150 square feet. Just to explain a few of the site context issues, or actually just the site context is that it is on a major street, Eglington Avenue East. It's characterized by a mix of one-story to two-story detached and semi-detached buildings. The site is also subject to the multiplex bylaw and the site and area specific policy in OPA 649. It's also within the layered major transit station area, also known as site and area specific policy 6A2. This site is also on a higher-order transit corridor and along an enhanced surface transit network pursuant to official plans, maps four and five. Transit connectivity, there's the layered LRT station that's going to be 390 meters to the east, bus route 34 and 56A. And also, in terms of housing context, the neighborhood, according to the neighborhood profile, has a lower percentage of rental households in comparison to the city of Toronto at large. With respect to the variances, I'm going to start with variance number three, the building setback to the west side lot line. This is what's the nature of driving variances number one and three. But, so the revised variance is sought at 0.3 meters along the city's boulevard, and if I can ask staff to go to the site plan, we can see that there is no adjacent built form to the west, and there is a, at least a four-meter boulevard, yes, you can see that on the survey there as well, a four-meter boulevard to the city's sidewalk. So the existing building side, west side back is 0.46 meters, and what is being proposed on the site plan, you can see, is also that the proposed building seeks a 1.2-meter east side yard setback. So the proposed four-plex is being oriented closer to Eglington Avenue and closer to Ramsay Road, recognizing the gentle intensification that's being proposed for the multiplex to be placed further away from existing building forms that are adjacent to the property. So there's a very large separation distance along the west side of the multiplex of the sidewalks that is provided, that is more than what is provided normally, and in my opinion, there are no built form impacts of this closer west side yard setback to any other property or the public realm to the west. With respect to the variance number one, the rear patio is located below grade and is an amenity area associated with the lower-level unit. It's situated also to the west of the property to ensure that there are no privacy impacts, and there, in my opinion, there's no impact to the proposed recessed patio setback to the public realm. With respect to the front yard setback, it's proposed at, at six meters to be consistent with the major streets zoning bylaw amendment, which permits higher of, a higher order of development such as four-story townhouses and six-story apartment buildings to be located at a distance of six meters from a major road. So the planned context for the city's major streets, according to the major streets bylaw and OPA, are to be six-meter front yard setbacks, and although the front yard setback being proposed is closer to Eglington Avenue than the adjacent properties, in my opinion, it is suitable also to place the building closer to Eglington Avenue in, in order to achieve better preservation of the honey locust tree. I note that many of the concerns of neighbors relate to the tree, it is being preserved, it is not proposed to be removed. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I await questions from the members and responses to the concerned residents.
Thank you. Do any of the members have questions? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could we refer to your exonometric drawings, which I think he is drawing A09? And I have a, there it is. No, back one. My question has to do with the, or my concern, has to do with the impact of that stairway system at the back on the adjacent neighbor to the, I guess it's to the west. Have you given any thought as to providing some form of relief screening? And I'm not suggesting a solid wall there, but something that would at least ameliorate the imposing nature of that stairway to the neighbor immediately adjacent? The building is, given, given the neighbor is a bungalow on Eglington, the building is quite large from, compared to what they're used to and what else exists on the street. It seems to me that it's made even larger by that stair structure at the back, which you need, of course, for the building code, but I'm wondering if you've given any consideration to providing something that's a little bit less visually intrusive to the neighbors in terms of how you might treat the, the side of that stair and platform structure?
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you for the observation, Mr. Nipfel. I would definitely be in agreement with a, a condition to provide privacy screening to the east from that compliant rear exit stair structure. As you have mentioned, sir, yes, it is to ensure compliance with building code.
Thank you.
Any other questions from panel? No? So we will start with the first, is there anyone in the audience here to speak to this item? No? Yes, oh, sorry. Oh, they all are, thank you. So whoever wants to go first, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Make sure the microphone's on, so we can hear you. Can you hear me? Okay? Yes, thank you.
My name's Catherine G. I live at 283 Ramsay Road, just adjacent, we back on, to 712 Eglington Avenue East. It is reassuring that we've heard this afternoon that they're going to, the plans are to retain that tree. The loss or the threat of the loss of that tree is quite significant in our household. I have three young children and a dog. I've outlined in our letter of concern that we have some medical issues within our house that would be directly impacted by some of these proposed changes. Given that we're being recorded, out of respect for the individual concerned, I'm not going to go into that in any great detail, but they are noted there, and I just want to kind of reemphasize that today. The tree itself provides a lot of sound protection from the traffic that travels up and down Eglington Avenue, and it also provides a lot of privacy. The building design, the height itself, is also a concern to us, both in terms of a loss of privacy and the fact that it is so out of keeping with the rest of the buildings within our immediate area. The style of it is, is very jarring in that regard with what's adjacent and surrounding areas. The other aspect that concerns me, not just because we live directly next to the building, it's to the wider community. We've lived there for six years, and it is a beautiful area to live in, and the community, we've all come together around this, care deeply about it. But a number of our, our children all attend the, the local elementary and middle school and travel across, there are a number of kids who travel to the high school across. The construction implications that we would face during this time in longer term are significant, with the ability to turn quite quickly off of Eglington and onto Ramsay. We've ourselves faced issues coming out of our own driveway, should there be any vehicles parked between 283 Ramsay and Eglington Avenue. The parking question, I'm not sure is particularly clear in the plan, how they would manage that. And parking and speed traffic in our area is a noted concern already, with a number of speed-reducing measures in place, and the presence of a number of crossing guards in the area to keep the children safe on their way to and from school. Those are issues which would go beyond construction and into the kind of longer-term settling in, I guess, of any residents who come to, to stay in that property on that area. But those are the, the primary concerns, is the loss of privacy, the sound impacts. We have our own concerns about that within our house, but the wider safety implications, both for ourselves, but for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. If the next resident could come forward, please? And we will bring the applicant back at the end to address all the comments that have been made.
Madam Chair and committee members, we'd like to introduce ourselves to you. My name is Karen Huang.
And my name is Jatson Liu.
We live at 714 Eglington Avenue East. We live next to the applicant's property. We are here because we care about the changes being proposed around our home and neighborhood that we have lived in for over 33 years. Along with our children, we have created deep roots in the neighborhood, and we try to give back to the neighborhood whenever we can. Currently, I have been a member of the neighborhood's construction liaison committee for the Eglington Crosstown for over six years, and as always, my concerns have been about safety around the build. As the application stands, we oppose the application for various concerns, although we have just heard about the west side setback being increased from zero to 0.3. We feel that there still might be a bit of concern there. First, I will get to that shortly, but first I'd like to say that the applicant's proposal to build a plain rectangular rental building that is much taller than the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, and with, thank you, committee member for mentioning the towering outside fire escape staircase, we feel that it is incredibly out of character for the neighborhood. Also, this outside fire escape staircase, we feel should not be there at all, because we feel that it will definitely pose a safety risk for children, as they will be curious to climb and play on it. North Lee Elementary and Middle School is just a block away. Although it will greatly affect the quality of our life in our house, we also noticed this safety issue as well. Next, the side setbacks. In regards to the east side setback, we noticed that they are proposing a zero side setback as well, and we feel the concern that there, again, another safety issue, that it leaves us a little, very little room to safely maintain our property on that side. As well, for fire and house insurance, it will definitely go up, because our properties are so close together as the risk of damage to fire and other incidences may occur. Regards to the west side setback being increased to 0.3, as I said, it may not even be big enough, because in this corner here of Eglington Ramsay Road, it is very heavily trafficked area for vulnerable road users. There are cars and future bike lanes, and there are children in schools, and there's a bus stop right in front of the applicant's house. There are two rehabilitation hospitals five blocks away on Ramsay Road, and sometimes people in wheelchairs get on and off at the bus stop to go to and from the hospital. And we just question that this west side setback, it will, if it will allow pedestrians and people in wheelchairs to cross each other safely. Lastly, we would like to bring to your attention that at this intersection and block, blocks of Eglington and Ramsay Road, all four corners are single-family homes. This is quite a unique feature of Eglington Avenue. All other corners along the 10-kilometer Eglington Crosstown strip either have a school, storefront, office building, church, some sort of building mixed in with single-family homes at the corners. We think that the intersection of Eglington and Ramsay Road is a special landscape and built form feature of the neighborhood and the city of Toronto. It would be such a shame to lose this very green and warm landscape, because it defines little pockets around our city that is charming, beautiful, and wholesome. We hope that the city can see the unique features of this intersection and try to protect it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Cattell. I'm co-president of the Lee Side Residents Association, and we have a postbox at 1601 Bayview Avenue. Lee Side Residents Association, we're here really to express our strong opposition to variances one, three, and four. The variances would, if approved, result in insufficient separation from the side lot lines and the abutting buildings for building maintenance and rear yard access, and would fail to maintain a consistent built form character in the neighborhood. I understand now we have changes made, proposed on the fly, without consulting, you know, without advising residents, to reduce that 1.2-meter variance down to 0.3. Well, yeah, great, but we would suggest that it be eliminated altogether. There's, we, so we object to these last-minute changes, and for example, we understand, you know, removing a parking pad at the back, great, again, on the fly. The resident, Mr. Quang, has referred to the, to the nature of this building, the multiplex, as being not fitting the character of the neighborhood. It's really like a, a small tenement building from Glasgow or someplace, early, you know, Second World War, quick construction, that doesn't reflect, doesn't fit into the, to the established neighborhood. However, it's reflective of the, the new bylaw that City Council has approved, therefore we cannot, you know, meaningfully make progress on that. There's a, there's a broader issue here of the city not explaining, not communicating changes that are happened, that, that they want to happen, that, that they want to bring forward to the grassroots level. So this, this bylaw, you know, is, is creating a whole new landscape potentially, this maybe is the first one. But, you know, as a, as a residents' association, this is quite alarming, and it's obviously very frustrating to the neighbors immediately affected by this. It's, it's not a, it just isn't a beautiful building, there's no architecture here. We would really suggest that the, the applicant go back to the drawing board and try and create something that actually fits the, the street. create something that actually fits the, the street on Eglington, which as the, as the residents say, is a very beautiful street and actually unique right now. The, would mention that the, so our comments are that the proposal involves taking down a modest bungalow and replacing it with a drab walk-up apartment building that resembles those built during previous housing shortages. The multiplex resoning accounts for there being no variances for height, FSI, lot coverage, etc. A little bit horrifying. The three-side yard variances all relate to the west side, which is a city boulevard. The other side of the street is zoned RD. In addition, seven one two Eglington does not align with the houses on Rumsey north of Eglington. As such, it is visually undesirable for the new building to extend even further westward. The, I would say that the staff report echoes these concerns and we would ask that you stick with the recommendations of staff to not approve those variances. And I guess we'll take our concerns about the multiplex to another, another arena, but it, it's an eye-opener this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is that everyone here in attendance? I believe so. Do we have people online? Great, thank you. So if we could have the applicant back on to address the comments that have been raised? Is it Mr. Chan? Are you there?
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. So I appreciate the comments by the concerned neighbors, Mrs. G, Mrs. Wang, and Mr. Cattell, representative of the LRA. Yes, I'd just like to address each of the comments individually. So with respect to the tree, I appreciate that Ms. G recognizes that we are now going to maintain that tree and hopefully it alleviates their concerns with regards to the impacts to their living ability and their child on their property to the north. With respect to the notion of the proposal being out of keeping with the character of the area, I would just like to ask staff to turn to page seven of my planning rationale. I just, would just like to note for the, to the committee that the proposed height of the building is in compliance with the RM zone. The proposed depth and length of the building is compliance with the RM zone. The main walls are in compliance with the RM zone provisions and the east side yard setback at one point two meters is also in compliance with the RM zone. And this is also speaking to Ms. Wang's point regarding the west side setback. Of course, it was recognized that the originally proposed zero meters was an issue to planning and such that we have now complied with planning recom- planning's recommendation to have zero point three meter west setback that they feel is appropriate to address the concerns with regarding to access and the distance between the curb and the sidewalk and the proposed building. On page seven here, I'd just like to show the below, the lower image. That's from the zoning bylaw. And if you could zoom in a bit, if that's possible, you can see that the existing context is shown for the buildings on those properties on Eglington Avenue East, that it is typical to have at least one of the side yards being at or near zero meter side yard setback. So with respect to respecting and reinforcing the existing setbacks pursuant to policy four point one point five of the official plan, in my opinion, what is being proposed with the side yard setback variance to the west is certainly in line with the existing physical character. This is also notwithstanding too, and to also to address Ms. Wang's comment with regards to the west side setback, is that, yes, this is an intersection that does have a high degree of foot and vehicular traffic. However, just like to also continue to note that we do have four additional meters to the side yard, in the side yard to the Rumsey Road right-of-way. And then on top of that, we're providing an additional foot in order to provide access. And on the images that are provided also in this report too, you can see that there is a large hedge that provides a degree of privacy to the existing building, which would be maintained for the new build, of course. With respect to the context about single-family homes, yes, it is recognized that the existing context does comprise on this immediate context block of single-family detached and semi-detached homes. However, from the planned context, it is, again, I'd like to reiterate, it is on a major street, which City Council has provided a directive in their Major Streets Bylaw and OPA that these particular properties fronting onto major streets are slated for gentle degrees of intensification in the form of multiplexes, townhouses, and in fact, in, in an assembly of lots, six-story apartment buildings up to nineteen meters height. The MTSA for this area also, under direction of City Council, provides that new development shall have a minimum of three units or zero point five zero FSI if it's a detached building. Now, to Ms. G's point with regards to schools and parking, I, I can appreciate that there would be some impacts that could be realized currently with respect to the Eglington Line construction and, and parking. However, this site is a hundred to two hundred meters south of the North Lee Public School. It is within walking distance of Lee Side Public School. So I would, I would submit to the committee that the future residents of this building would not be using cars to drop their kids off at North Lee Public School or Lee Side High School, which is, again, is within a very short walking distance of the site as well as a number of other public amenities, as well as local community services in the CR zone surrounding Laird Avenue and the, and the CR zone to the east along Eglington With respect to congestion, I think the issues, the perceived impacts of congestion arising at a construction or this development is encapsulated in condition two of the MetroLink's recommended conditions, which we will have to submit a traffic management plan and a construction management plan to, to MetroLink's, which I will absolutely share with the surrounding neighbors in order to address their concerns so they can view those documents once we produce them to satisfy MetroLink's conditions. And also to speak to parking, there is no parking anymore proposed on this site. There was a parking pad that is removed in order to address urban forestry, which is a continued discussion that we're about to have with urban forestry should this application be approved, is that bylaw eight nine twenty-two, which is the zoning bylaw amendment to remove the minimum number of parking spaces for low-rise development. And certainly, there is no parking being proposed here, no variances related to, to consider. With respect to Mr. Cattell's comments in terms of not fitting the character, a multiplex of four units of this height, of this building length, and of the east yard, side yard setback that is being proposed is permitted by the city of Toronto as per City Council's directions. So OPA six four nine now permits multiplexes in all low-rise residential zoning classifications, including the RM zone. And I disagree with Mr. Cattell's characterization of the building as an apartment building. It is classified as a multiplex pursuant to the zoning examiner's notice and interpretation by city planning staff. So it is a multiplex of four units. It is not an apartment building. And I also like to add also that this is the type of gentle intensification that is envisioned by City Council to occur on especially this kind of site, being on a major street, within an MTSA, along a higher-order transit corridor, and along a, a route that has surface transit priority. So this is, in my opinion, an ideal site to have this type of development. And also to speak to the character of the west side yard again, the existing context I've explained has those smaller side yards on at least one side of each of those buildings on the north and south side of Eglington Avenue East and the Committee of Adjustment Decisions, which aren't available for Eglington Avenue East, because there aren't any decisions on Eglington Avenue East. However, in looking to the interior of the neighborhood, there are a number of properties on Donley, such as one seven two, one thirty Donley, one one five Donley, that all have side yard variances approved at zero point three meters and as well at, on Sutherland, at, at three nine nine Sutherland at zero point three meters, at four two eight Sutherland at zero point one four meters. So there certainly is precedent on the interior of the neighborhood for s- at least one smaller side yard, notwithstanding the fact that the existing context along Eglington Avenue East also has properties with one, a small side yard for each of those properties.
Thank you.
And I thank you for those comments from the neighbors and any more comments from Committee of Adjustment members.
One question, could you just confirm the intent, the sidewalk on Eglington and Rumsey Road will be maintained, correct?
Yes. On Rumsey Road, the concrete sidewalk, because under the official plan, there is no planned widening of Rumsey Road on, on official, on the official planned right-of-way schedule. Eglington Avenue East, I would expect that the right-of-way would be reconstructed or resurfaced and the sidewalks be widened after the Eglington light rail is completed.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you clarify on the site plan, you have a parking pad? In your comments, you indicated there's no parking. That pad's being removed, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, Mr. Nipfel. On the revised plans that were provided to Jenny Kotas, the rear parking pad is removed. And also, the rear walkway is being reconfigured to be lessened in order to limit its impact onto the existing rear yard honey locust tree. And it also indicated on the revised plans is that all paving on the site with respect to the walkways will be consisting of permeable pavers, which is also a condition that my clients would be able to be reading.
I guess I don't, I don't have the revised site plan. It isn't in our package, then. This is the one that, that we have in our package. Is there, is there another one that's? Because all the ones that I-
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, revised, revised plans were sent to Jenny Kotas and the, and the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. I'll believe, I'll, I'll just confirm what timing that was. Staff did confirm receipt of it.
If we have those, can they go up on the screen, the site plan? Because that would ask, it's the-
Through you, Ms., through you, Madam Chair, can we clarify when they were submitted?
From the applicant?
Correct.
Could you please advise when they were submitted?
Through you, Madam Chair, they were sent yesterday.
All right, so we don't have access to those.
Well, it's more that we don't put up anything publicly beyond the timeframe of when material needs to be submitted because it does not go through a public review process. It will be posted on ABMS, but not, same as if the applicant was present, he would not be allowed to present that information.
So all, all I was venturing to, to determine is, for people that are watching, what can they expect? And the site plan will not have that parking pad in it and the tree that's to the right of the site plan, therefore to the, I guess, to the south of the, of the parking lot, that's the one that you're, you're going to retain, is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that is correct, sir. And the revised plans also show the zero point three meter west side yard setback for the building and the recessed platform. And also show that the parking pad has been removed.
I'm wondering, through you, Madam Chair, to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer, is it possible for us to have a condition that to be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan, but it could be the, the new site plan?
Staff?
My apologies, can you repeat that, please?
If we were to have a condition that the project is to be substantially completed in accordance with the site plan, can you, can you give us a reference to the new site plan? Because this site plan's not accurate.
There is, there is some difficulty in that, in that if, if it's not being shown, I want to make sure everybody knows what it is and what the difference is.
Okay, then let me go the reverse, then. My concern is, this one has been shown and it doesn't clearly state that that parking lot, that parking's being removed. I find that confusing.
Can I make a note? I have the package in my, it's in here. It's, it's revised plans dated October twenty-fourth. It's in the pack, it's in the supporting documents.
I don't have that either.
You don't have that?
No.
I have October twenty-fourth and it does not show a parking pad. Yeah. If you look in the supporting docs, there's two sets of plans, there's one-
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe the member's looking at the application information center. So we upload everything, but we generally don't show it in this hearing because it was not submitted in time. Similarly, if someone had come before us in person right now, we do not permit them to show material.
So to, to address the concern that I have, do we need to have a condition that parking lot, that the parking that's shown on the site plan is not going to be implemented?
If you-
This is misleading and there's a phrase that is, there's no entrance.
If you can phrase it as such and the applicant is okay with it and everybody understands what it is, it should be okay.
And we would have to refer to the site plan dated whatever date this is. Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, sorry.
I, I'm confused. Why do I have the revised plans, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, that, are they not admissible? Can somebody clarify that for me?
I think that they're on the application, I forget what it's called, application information.
Supporting documents.
Yes, but they're not in our package and they weren't available as of the deadline.
But you got those from the staff.
You must have got them from the-
They're in the supporting documents right now, so.
I'm looking at the bookmarks and I don't have supporting documents, so.
They're in the supporting documents in the Application Information Center, which is the public-facing website that we have.
So they've been uploaded because they were received, but we didn't receive them as of the deadline required to be included in the package or considered by the committee. So I think the way around it is, as Mr. Nipfel indicated, he just, if you were to make a motion, you could just say that the parking pad that's indicated on the site plan is not going to be provided. I believe there was a change to the walkway as well and permeable paving for any hard surface in the rear yard as well or on the whole site. Maybe the applicant can clarify that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the revised plans were submitted in response to staff comments that were received last Thursday or Friday that appeared on the AIC. So any revisions to the plans would have come in after the deadline, of course, in response to planning staff's comments. So therefore, we had the architect revise the site plan in order to indicate the removal of the rear parking pad, as well as to indicate that our all paved areas are going to be permeable paving. And of course, the repositioning of the building to achieve zero point three meter west setback, and that has also caused the revision of the rear stairs to also be zero point three. I also like to note, Madam Chair, that cities, that the Urban Forestry Department has also recommended that the rear yard portion, if the committee were to tie the site plan to be substantially in accordance that the rear yard, so any portions of the building from the rear main wall to the rear lot line are not tied to the plans because we still need to discuss with Urban Forestry the layout of the rear yard elements in order to provide lesser impact for the preservation of the existing honey locust tree in that rear yard.
Thank you. Thank you. Um do we have any further questions of the applicant? No? Ready to go into committee? Alright, let's go into committee. Comments, motions?
I, I just want to discuss, I have, I, I think that the building is very sort of stark and doesn't all that fit into the neighborhood, but the interior addresses three bedrooms, you know, posib- hopefully, you know, young families or families will move in, and that is in keeping with the neighborhood. So I don't know if there's a way to sort of soften the exterior, make it more appropriate to the neighborhood um and still keep the four units as three-bedroom homes for, you know, hopefully families. That would be my only comment on it, otherwise I think it addresses the four tests.
Anyone else want to comment or make a motion? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I'd just like to make a comment because the um, if, if this was a um, a new area and this was a vacant lot, I don't think anyone would argue that the built form that's before us is somewhat at odds with the, the fabric of the buildings along Eglington and Rumsey Road. That, however, isn't the issue before us today. The issue before us today is that we've been asked for relatively minor variances to the existing bylaw. And none of those variances um in any measurable sense result in this form. This form is permitted um and the variances are as intended to adjust um relatively minor components of it, so I, I, I just want to say that the built form is definitely a contrast to the existing fabric of bungalows on Rumsey and Eglington Avenue, but it is in keeping with the policy direction that the city's taking, and it is in keeping with the zoning bylaw with the exception of the variances that are before us today, which I would argue are minor.
And would you like to turn that into a motion?
I was hoping you wouldn't ask. Sure, um I'll give it a try. There's a lot here, though. I would like to move approval of the application as varied, which has variances one and three changed to point three meters. The forestry conditions two and three are requested and uh I, earlier I had asked the applicant and he agreed to provide some form of privacy screening along the east side of the fire escape um structure at the back of the building.
And could we?
And then um the parking, the.
Sorry, Madam Chair, is there some more detail about that screening height?
No, I, I actually, I personally think that, that we should leave that to the architect because it's going to be, it's a challenge to not create something that's a, a wall that is even more encumbering than the stairway and yet provides some level of screening, and I, I'd be happy with something that's just called a privacy screen rather than trying to play designer here and design the screen here at the table.
As a cautionary note, the applicant or architect can put something up that's one inch tall and call it a privacy screen, and the, he would be issued a building permit.
How would he be screening something that's three stories?
That's an interpretation and likely very difficult to enforce. I'm just putting it out there. We usually have some dimensions so that examiner or person, the inspector, knows they've met the obligation as outlined in the application.
Okay, um. Well, it would normally be one point five, one point five meters per floor. I'm not sure that the top floor needs that screening, that's why I was leaving it open. So, oh, so, so that the, that the, that a one point five meter per floor height be provided on, for privacy screening on the first and second floor fire escape structures on the west sa- east side, is, would that work? Okay. And the only other thing that, the parking, I'm in the applicant's um uh at the applicant's discussion here, perhaps we could just say that there is no parking provided on site? And maybe the applicant could advise if that's going to create a problem. And I, I, my reasoning for that is, I think the variances that are submitted or are be applied for are reasonable. I think the built form is um misleading in that I think the drawing isn't, isn't showing a building that will perhaps be more compatible with the area than is suggested by the drawings. There are variations of color, texture, and so forth that might make this much more compatible to the character of the community. I, I do think that it meets the um, the four tests, and I think it supports the uh, the city's objective to intensify along major routes.
Staff, are we clear on the?
Motion. Um is there Metrolinks?
Yes, there is a Metrolinks memo, thank you for the reminder.
That was a question because the, the applicant had asked that we not apply.
One A.
One A, so I'm, I, and I'm, I'm sympathetic with his point of view, so I would be inclined to put Metrolinks conditions with the exception of one A because I don't see that you can hold them to a timeframe that's not established.
No, that, that's fair, if that, but that's up to you. But the parking one, can you sort of clarify? The, the wording is, you don't, no parking on site? To be provided?
Well, there was a parking pad provided, and now the applicant said there would be no parking provided.
Okay.
Is there a concern with that?
A, a little bit, just because you're in committee right now, so we can't have the applicant come back on. This condition will permanently delete any sort of parking on site.
Would it be preferable to say that the parking pad shown on the site plan, and I can identify it for you, will not be provided? Is that preferable?
That, that's okay, yeah. So have you referenced existing one that was provided? With a notation that the parking pad as shown on will be deleted?
Okay, site plan drawing eight zero three, issued eight nineteen twenty twenty four.
And that, and, and in continuation that the parking pad will be deleted from that site plan? Yes, thank you.
Uh can I just suggest one other thing was that, sorry, not to belabor it, but the, any hard surface um.
Oh, sorry.
Be permeable?
Was that just in the rear yard or was that?
I think he said the whole site.
Okay, so that all service parking, all surfaces are to be permeable?
Hard surfaces, I think, right? Any hard surface on the site?
Are to be um.
Constructed a permeable.
Yeah.
Material.
I knew I wouldn't get them.
I think we have a motion.
Nice second, Dan.
And, and Mr. Marziale seconds that motion. All in favor? That's unanimous and carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we need a uh five-minute break? Panel? Yes, thank you. We will take a five-minute break.
Yeah, well, I, I would like something, you know, I believe I'd like that.
How can, how can Christian suggest that my concern with the parking is related to commuting to and from school? Like, these guys are going to do their food shop career and then they're going to carry these. It's, that was deliberate, there's no way for it to. No, at least the tree is still, and they're trying to make sure it's formally completed, so if there, there's no parking.
Well, from my perspective, compared with some other panels, I think also, you know, and she has, you can, you know, I mean, she could, you know, sort of say that, you know, she's giving, I mean, giving everybody, every minute as much so. Rather than sort of hurrying, you think.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's defined because I'm starting to think. People show up a bit.
Well, I don't know why we have that much time.
I'm getting that.
Yeah.
That's why I think something like that.
I know.
It's like, I know, it's confusing. Oh, yeah, it's probably just very bad. It's the same thing.
Thank you. Alright, yes, we are on item number six now. Seventy-layered drive to construct a semi-detached multi-unit building. We have variances for first-story height, landscaping strip related to the front yard setback, residential units not in a mixed-use building. On file, we have a community planning report, a Metrolinks memo, the applicant's response to the planning report, revised plans, and a letter of objection. So the applicant.
It's a quick housekeeping matter with this, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe Scott Stevens was added to this item erroneously.
Oh, yes, I was going to question that. Didn't look like it was on the right, on the right application, thank you. So we have the applicant for seventy-layered avenue, please.
Can I voice hello?
Yes. Could you please state your name and address?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee member. I'm Bobak Padavi, MBI. I'm acting as an agent on behalf of the applicant. My address is ten two five five Yonge Street.
Thank you. And do you have any changes to make to the application?
Uh, yes, I did. I revise uh and send to the committee. Uh, actually, I revise variance number two. The proposed building was amended to provide required soft landscaping in front yard. So by providing that required soft landscaping for both lots, variance number two is deemed to be clear. And various number one and three, I have some kind of clarification for that.
So are you deleting variance two?
Uh, actually, I I put for variance number two. Yeah, I provide uh provide required soft landscaping in front yard as the staff report request for it.
Through you, Madam Chair, I think he has to be just, he has probably a little more direction.
So variance number two requires a minimum three meter wide strip of landscaping provided between the lot line and the street. Are you saying that you're complying with that and therefore variance two is no longer required?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we do have a member of the public in attendance and so if you could provide us with a brief presentation, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Okay, uh, as I said, we have three variances. Uh, for various what number two, uh, I provided required uh soft landscaping in both front yards. So this variance is to be deemed to be clear. For various number one and various number three, the history of buildings through building use and building form as the lawful existing should be considered. In contrast, the staff report and recommendation didn't notice the lawful existing of building. It has built a semi-detached standalone residential building at number sixty-eight and number seventy Layer Drive, six eight, six eighty, sixties. Also, staff report and recommendations didn't notice the issuance of a recent building permit for these two lots. By means of renovation addition last year. Still, as the province and city recently are facing a house shortage, as a responsible citizen, the owner wishes to have a conversion of fourplex for each semi. Um, the staff report noted that O P A four fifty all is standalone residential building and as the existing buildings is standalone residential, also recent building permit issue for these two lots was a semi-detached standalone residential building and now the proposal is a new semi-detached multi-unit doubling. So we have continuity in use and unity in building form from past to future. And, you know, beyond all this explanation, constructing multi-unit for rental purpose is the priority of all level of governments in Canada. And owner as a responsible citizen wants to make a social contribution by constructing multi-unit instead of custom home or luxury houses. And finally, in my conclusion, I strongly believe that the proposed application as a semi-detached multi-unit dueling maintained the intent of zoning by law and O P A four hundred fifty and appropriate development for the site. Also, I strongly believe that all variances are minor. Based on new version submission of variance number three and clarification on the lawful existing building for variance number one. And number three, I expect the committee of adjustment to accept and approve the application. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions of the applicant?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Mr. Marziani.
Can you clarify? I'm looking at your floor plans. The basements are connected? The garage are are one space or it's separated? Cause I can see just it's it's one space.
Uh, uh, actually, it's a carport. And it's it's a carport and it's in one space.
Oh, it's open, sorry, yeah, okay.
And it's connected. Yes, it's open. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the whole, but the back basement, the 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 enclosed basement, the occupied space is not connected, correct? It's separate, totally separate.
Yeah, yeah, it's separate, completely separate, yes, two units.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a question now. The, I think the drawing I have is an older drawing, but it has four car spaces and it's in a car carport. How did you, oh, the drawing that's on the screen now, I don't have that one, the one that's got the green, is is this, the one that's on the screen right now, is that your revision for eliminating variance number two?
Yes, yes, yes. Absolutely.
And so there are less cars then? What you did is you removed two cars.
Uh, actually, the car is, you know, uh, is in carport, it's not in open space. It's, you know, beneath the, you know, floor.
Oh, okay, I've got it, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
So how many spaces are there? Two? One for each house?
Two. Yes, one, actually, we don't need, uh, you know, we don't need parking for this kind of building, but, you know, owner wants to have parking there.
And and what is behind?
It's not requirements.
There's the, there's the green space and then there's the carport. What's, can you go back to?
Patio. There's a patio.
On screen.
That one?
The next, no, the next one. The one that shows the car, yeah, this one. What is beside the car space?
It's a patio.
Okay.
Yeah. It's an open patio.
So if if we wanted to approve this subject to building in compliance with the with the site, is that is that the site plan? Or is that the first floor plan? Cause I don't have this drawing.
This is, it's a floor plan. Yeah, the side plan is the one before this one.
Oh, well, maybe I do have it.
Yeah, if you go.
I'm keep, I'm going.
One back. We come up with side plan.
Okay, and is this a revised version that I? I just have.
Yeah, this is a revised version.
Okay, I don't have them. Okay, thank you. Do you have it? Yeah.
Sorry, any other questions of the applicant at this point? No? Okay, I guess we will hear hear from the resident who is here. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
It's on now? Thank you. My name is Jeff Cattell. I'm co-president of the Leeside Resident Association and, um, with the address one six oh one Bayview Avenue. The Leeside Resident Association is concerned about this application, opposed to the application basically on the basis that it doesn't conform with the public consultation-based plan called Laird in Focus. And this is the same point as being made by community planning in their comments to you. We recommend it be refused for for a couple of reasons. This is an important location at the south end of Laird on an important Leeside retail street. The application does not support the goal of Laird in Focus in maintaining and enhancing the retail character of the west side of Laird Drive. And secondly, the garages and the expansive driveways is undesirable for visual and environmental reasons. We've just considered an application where there was no parking. Here, there's the exact opposite, loads of parking. And and yet it's on a main, much more significant street than, you know, in terms of retail, than Ramsey's not a retail street. We we note that, um, on the contrary, a previous committee of adjustment application for this site was approved last year. And it's disappointing that that project, which we didn't object to at the time, did not get implemented. So what's what's going on here? I noticed that, um, other businesses along the street have been concerned about this project. So we had a planning, did a planning analysis of this application and basically came up with very similar concerns as as the city. This and the other, the other, the really two properties, I assume you're dealing with them both together, doesn't make sense to deal with them separately. Uh, both sixty-eight and seventy are just the two halves of the same thing. Our zoned C R, they're within an irregular triangular block shape towards the pointed end. The, uh, the rear is zoned R D with eighteen Henry having a low-rise apartment, which shares a similar street frontage as as proposed on the subject property, namely a swath of driveways leading to garages without landscaping. The site is directly across from the traditional industrial lands. However, the west side is is primarily retail. The plans show garages along the Laird frontage. The variance application for reduced main floor height would, if approved, preclude any continuity to a retail frontage. The variance involving, well, you've already, uh, on the fly, that's been taken out, so. Um, secondly, the the expansive driveways is undesirable. Other small projects like on Queen Street, for example, have adopted a single driveway accessing a car lift, placing the parking in the basement below. This might, this would be appropriate here as it would enable the frontage to accommodate the landscaping. And the third variance dealing with dwelling units in a residential building brings up the question of whether the retail continuity along the Laird frontage should be maintained. The block to the south is in a state of transition and its future is dependent upon whether it be an over, be part of the overall Laird retail continuum or be developed in a piecemeal, unspecified manner. Overall, um, we suggest that the four point five meter main floor height needs to be maintained as live-work units, if not retail. The access to parking needs to be reduced to a six meter driveway serving both buildings as one with respect to parking underground. And, uh, as I say, I say again, the community planning report is saying very similar things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the resident? No, thank you very much. All right, uh, and this is the only person we have to speak to the application, correct? All right, so can we take this into committee, or sorry, we can have the applicant back on to address the comments raised by the, um, community member?
Okay. Can I respond to these comments?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Um. Actually, um. There is a, there is one thing that I want to point out. The the problem of that area is not retail. If you go through Laird Street from sixty-eight to one hundred forty-six, you cannot come across even with one lot to be developed within the last ten years in the manner of mixed-use building. So the issue is not retail. The issue these days are shortage of housing. So, uh, what we did, we, uh, we, the proposed building comply with all, uh, regulations of C R. We comply with all setbacks, heights, forty-five degree angular plane projection, G F A, F S I, even with the front yard soft landscaping that the planning staff, uh, point out. Uh, but, you know, putting commercial retail in the, in the, you know, uh, ground floor with the, with with the front, with a very short wide frontage lot like this one is something unreal because of that, you know, this kind of project never developed on on that area. And if you're going to, uh, you know, uh, if you refuse this application, these sites, this, you know, these these kind of dead sites sit there for decades. As you can see, similar with this kind of, you know, size along the Laird without any development. Because, you know, combining residential and retail with a very small lot is something, you know, impossible nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant?
I still have a quick question from the applicant.
Go ahead.
I I am looking at the basement. The basement is connected below the parking path. Is that correct? How, what kind of semi is that? It's just one space underneath the parking pass, correct?
It's only, only, uh, you know, actually, the, uh, when, when we, when we went through the, um, through the ZAP program, uh, the examiner, uh, come up with that idea that it is not too semi. And it is a one apartment building. So by that idea, the connection of two parts of, uh, you know, amenities, uh, is nothing to be considered. Furthermore, it's it's going to be a two-building in commutative adjustment application.
Cause this is being filed as two, uh, separate applications.
Yes.
It's a bit confusing now, cause we have another application after this, but this is one building. I I'm a little bit confused. It's not, it's not changing any of the variances, but I am confused of how this has been filed.
No. Yeah. You know, uh, and once I had put application for commutative adjustment, I put one application for two, uh, fourplex. But it was, uh, it was, you know, send it back to me and request me to put two application for each semi. So in that case, I, uh, I, uh, you know, separate each, uh, you know, separate each plans and each, you know, buildings. But as you see, for, as you, as you can see in the ZAP notice, they consider finally two, two semi, uh, fourplex for each of them.
Mr. Nipfel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I I'm confused by the drawings as well. Can you, is the front elevation what you see from the street? The. We've got two versions of the drawings, the ones that you originally do, but this draw, A dash zero eight, is that the front elevation on the street?
No, that one is rear.
No.
This one, eight, eight ten is rear, this one.
No, I'm looking at A oh eight. That one.
That one is front elevation, yes.
So that's what you see from the street?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? So we'll, let's go into committee. And does anyone have any comments they would like to make? Mr. Nipfel.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I I'm having some difficulty with the plans, but I believe I've got them straight at this point. I have real concerns about the streetscape. I don't think that this type of building frontage is doing anything for safe streets or, um, providing for activity on the street that that counteracts violence and promotes community engagement and and a variety of other things. And, um, based on the way in which the front yard is being treated, I I'm unable to support the application, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Would you like? Would you like to make a motion in that regard? Or does anyone else have any comments? Or does anyone else want to make a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move that the application be refused. I, I don't believe that the approach that's being put forward here is compatible with the city's promotion for active street life and safe street life. I, I think that providing blank eyes on the street is contrary to most planning principles that govern the urban design of urban areas, and I really feel that this is the wrong direction to be going. I don't believe it meets the four tests, and I therefore move that the application be refused.
Do we have a seconder? All right, so that motion fails. And we need another motion.
I will just throw in a few cents to the committee. I have concerns with the application as well, for some of the same reasons as Mr. Nipfel, but also understand the intent of the city to create a mixed-use block along this area, and I don't think that this application supports that. I think ideally what would be best would be if the lands were assembled in this block and somehow redeveloped together, where you could create some sort of mixed-use development, where you could have retail on the ground floor or quasi-retail office, that type of thing, and then have residential above, but that's not what's before us. So I find it problematic as is, despite the fact that it's existing, it is a residential-built form and they're looking to replace it, but I don't think the design of this one is appropriate for this area. Let's put it that way.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I mean, I'm hearing really clearly what you're saying, Chair, and what Member Nipfel has said, but I actually don't share that view at all, and I don't usually get into the design aspects of it. And if we're talking about sort of safety as well, then, you know, it's similar to my theme on homelessness at the beginning of this, this hearing. So, you know, based on that and based on learning from that, I, I don't think I have a problem with this application. And so I'll put forward a motion to approve the application. And just double check, can you? Yeah, that's it.
Member Sankar, as amended? As amended to?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, just to clarify.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a seconder?
I second that.
Mr. Marziani seconds the motion. All those in favor? So we have three in favor, opposed? Sorry, that motion carries. Your application's been approved. So let's move on to
Very much.
Item number seven, which is pretty much the flip version of this one. To construct a semi-detached multi-unit building with a minimum height, or, sorry, the variances are minimum height of the first story, landscaping strip related to the front yard setback, dwelling units in a residential building. On file, we have a community planning report, forestry condition number two, and MetroLinks memo. First of all, do you have any changes to the application?
Yes, it is the same. The same changes I apply for the 70, it applies for 68 as well, because it's a semi-detached building.
So just to be specific, could you indicate which variance is changing?
Okay, so variance number two, variance number two was changed. Provide adequate soft landscaping in front yard. So the variance number two, by providing, by adding that landscaping deemed to be clear, and variance number one and variance number three is remained.
So variance number two is deleted, as in 70 Laird? Similar to?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I want to add a comment. The variance number two is not about front yard landscaping, it's about landscape buffer, strip. So it's not about front yard landscaping.
Yeah.
So you understand that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I think we clarified that with the first application, but go ahead, applicant. Mr. Applicant, are you?
Yeah.
Do you want to clarify that? Or you said that variance number two, you're providing the strip of landscaping.
Yeah, actually, actually, I provide that three-meter, you know, adequate, because, you know, the, the planning staff concern is about water store management, because we don't have any land, soft landscaping in front yard. So I added the land, soft landscaping with the adequate area of that three-meter wide strip landscaping along the front yard.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So variance two, just to reiterate, variance number two is deleted for number 68 Laird?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I don't think we need a presentation. We do have the same member here in attendance, Mr. Katal, but he's already made his comments on 70, so I, I'm going to say they're probably the same for 68. I'm getting a nodding of approval. Do we need him to come forward and confirm? What's up to you? Would you like to just confirm you have the same comments?
Same, same comments. I have to say, I'm very disappointed about the prior decision. I think you need to look beyond just homelessness, number of units, and look at the quality of the proposal that's being presented, and public safety, as Mr. Nipfel said, is absolutely an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any que, any questions of the, of the speaker? No? All right. So I don't think there's anything additional to hear from the applicant on this, unless anyone has any questions that have come up since the previous item? No? We could take it into committee? And Member Sankar?
Yeah, my position remains unchanged and my deliberation on this remains unchanged. So I will put forward a motion to approve this application, subject to the amendments made today by the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, do it? Sorry, subject to forestry condition number two on this one. It's not on the previous one.
As well, yes, additionally.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And do we have a seconder?
I second that.
Mr. Marziani seconds it. All those in favor? So we have three in favor and opposed? Two opposed. Keep turning the mic off, I'm sorry. That application is, or the motion carries and the application is approved. Item number eight. 2550 Victoria Park and 2-6 Lansing Square. So this is an application to permit a reduction in the GFA devoted to office, medical office, or software development and processing. The variances are for, GFA for office, medical office, or software development and processing, a requirement for a non-residential building of a minimums area, of which a minimum is to be used for office and medical office. On file, we have bylaw 1006-2022, an office space needs study, a servicing compliance memo, presentation material, community planning memo, MetroLinks memo, and a late development engineering memo. So do we have the applicant?
Hello, David Morse from Bowsfields, Inc., Rechurch Street, Suite 200, Toronto.
Thank you very much. Do you have any changes to make to the application?
No, but there are, there is a condition of approval that we agree with that's outlined in the planning staff report.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here to speak to this application? I don't see anybody here and nobody online. So I will ask the committee members whether they want a presentation on this. Do we? No? So we don't think we need a presentation. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? And Mr. Morse, if, if there's something particular you want to mention, you can go ahead, but we're not requiring a presentation.
Thank you very much. Just, just very briefly through you, Madam Chair, the, there are two variances that pertain to the same gross floor area reduction. One's in the bylaw text, one is in Schedule A, and the condition of approval that's outlined in the planning staff report would require that the Schedule A variance is brought to City Council to, to authorize that approval. It's for a minor change to the Section 37 text. Other than that, just given the market conditions in the area, it was determined that it was going to be difficult to lease the full amount of office space that was approved. Instead, that office space has been replaced with compatible uses as recommended in the office needs study, including some office space, some shared office space, retail space, and self-storage warehouse. We also have a report from engineering which confirms that the servicing on the site is adequate to service the revised development. It's my opinion that the requested variances meet the four tests in Section 45-1 of the Planning Act, and I kindly ask that this application is approved. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you, we have no questions. We'll take this into committee. Does anyone want to start the conversation? Mr. Nipfel?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the application. I think it's straightforward and, and appropriate, clearly meets the four tests, it's a market-generated space reallocation, which I think we all appreciate, the needs, that level of flexibility. There is no downside to this application being approved. I'd like to recommend it without condition. And, oh, sorry, pardon me, with the condition that the planning department has put forward about the Section 37 agreement.
Okay, is that sufficient, staff? Okay, thank you. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Ms. Martin? All in favor? That is unanimous, carried. Your application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine. 6600 Young Street is an application for a, it's a proposal for a recreational entertainment center. The variance is to have more than 12 amusement devices. On file, we have a cover letter, plans, amusement device count, previous decisions on the property, and a site photo. And we have the applicant.
Hi, Madam Chair, my name's Moon Tenshu from AX Trust Solutions, Inc., and my address is 1505 150 Fairview Mall Drive.
Thank you very much. And do we have, is, is this Richard Cho? Is that a speaker? Is that related to, it says neighbor's agent, but I just want to clarify.
Through you, Madam Chair. I left a message with Richard Cho. I did not get through to him.
Okay. So do we proceed with the presentation? Okay, well, we could do, if you could provide, applicant provide a very, very brief, I think we all understand what this application's for, but just a very brief presentation, please.
So we are proposing 88 amusement equipment for this property, and it's a, as we know the subject set site is located within the Center Point Mall and is designated as a mixed-use area. So we are proposing more than the required amusement machine, because as per the zoning bylaw, the condition limits the number of the electronic gaming machine to only 12. It's because the intent of the zoning bylaw definition was to avoid a historical arcade type of use back in the 80s. However, our proposed electronic gaming machines are geared toward children and families. And when they, when these type of machines are commonly seen in restaurants, bowling arenas, movie theater, and everywhere else, so when the children playing these kind of arcade, it will definitely under superficial, and we don't see any, like, downside of proposing more than the allowed amount. And we believe that this proposal meets the requirement of the four tests, so we're, would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant? Anyone? Ms. Martin?
I don't know if this goes towards the applicant, but the address in the public, public hearing notice says 6464 Young Street. So what is the actual address? Is it 6600 or 6464? Because I think that's going to affect, if it's the wrong address, then I don't know how that affects this application.
The current address should be the 6600, not the 6464.
Well, if you look at the public hearing notice from October 1st, posted October 4th, it says 6464 Young Street.
We've actually talked to the application examiner regarding the address, and he said it should be okay that we go with the 6600 in the hearing. I think it's probably something went wrong.
Does, does, is there a 6464 on that property? Or is it somewhere else? Do you know? Because sometimes there's multiple addresses on a mall property.
Yeah, so I think 6464 also is the property address of the Center Point Mall.
It is. It's the address of Center Point Mall.
Maybe that's why it was advertised that way? I don't know. Staff, do we have a concern?
It looks like it covers, it looks like it's the same location.
It's just a different part of the, part of the mall?
It must have two addresses, yeah. It must have two addresses, yeah.
Does the photo that was included with the application, is that um at the north end of the site? Do you know? Because I'm wondering, because that's where sixty-six hundred comes up on Google Maps.
Through you, Madam Chair, it's listed as a span address from our end, so it should be okay. So it's a spanned address. Spanned, because it's a large, it's a rather large property.
Right. Okay, thank you. So I think we're okay from an address point of view?
I think, I think the applicant had mentioned that the zone examiner was okay with the address.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The variance you're requesting um proposes um fifteen amusement devices in, and maybe it's a terminology issue here, but in your um covering letter you indicate that just a minute. Yeah. The project application seeks to allow the amusement arcade with an area of blah 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 and eighty-eight electronic gaming machines. Those numbers don't match. Am I misunderstanding the term?
Um, our proposal is eighty-eight amusement uh equipments. The number indicate on these only notice should be updated to eighty-eight, not fifteen.
Okay, well, I don't think we can do that. That's a huge change. And what went out is fifteen. So the, what you're asking for is eighty-eight, not fifteen.
Yes.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's, that's an issue from our end. I'm, I'm just looking at the zoning review now. It does say fifteen. It hasn't been updated. So my recommendation, so the applicant doesn't lose their fee, is to defer at this point until a corrected zoning review is issued and a new public notice sent out.
So um, are you? Right, I think the only option is to defer the application so that the notice can be updated and recirculated. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
I'm asking the applicant.
Yes, we are okay with this.
Okay, so, so uh I would need a motion to defer. Um, Member Sankar? Go ahead.
Sorry, you cut out there for a little bit, but I hear you now. Yeah, so I'll put forward a motion to um defer this application, signee die, to give the applicant a chance uh to correct the notice and come back to us um with those revisions intact. And I do feel it's, it's an acceptable application, just to share with the applicant as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And a seconder, Mr. Nipfel? All in favor of the motion to defer? That's unanimous, carried. So the application will be deferred and recirculated at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten. Thirty-one twenty-five to three D, oh, that one's deferred? Oh, thank you.
That's been deferred.
Thank you, sorry about that. Eleven. Seventeen Madoc Drive. Pulling up my notes. A new two-story detached dwelling with an integral garage. We have variances for uh side yards, setback of a platform to the west lot line, building length, lot coverage, building depth, height, height of side exterior main walls. On file, we have a previous decision, previous O M B decision, survey, plans, arborist report, tree photos, presentation, community planning report, urban forestry conditions, and twenty letters of support. Do we have the applicant here? Looks like uh, we have a new agent. Tay Ruk.
Yeah, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of committee. My name is Tay Ruk. I am the planner for the owners of the property of seventeen Madoc. I'm at eighty-five, right, sorry, eighteen Young Street.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here? Sorry, just, just to clarify, um, do you have any changes to make to the application?
Pardon me?
Do you have any changes to make to the application?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, Madam Chair. There are no changes to the application.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone on the list of participants, so I think we're, no one in the audience to address this item. Do we need a presentation? Committee? No, okay, thank you. So unless you have anything specific you want to add, we can go into committee to make a determination on it? Mr. Ruk?
No, just uh, we're aware of, Madam Chair, we're aware of the, the planning condition that the approval be substantially in accordance with the front and west elevation and aware of city urban forestry conditions, uh, number one, which we're okay with. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Martin?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. So the, the back covered porch, is it, there's no intention to close it in, I presume?
Correct, it's just covered up top and it's open on the sides.
Is it part of the, the lot coverage?
Uh, yes, it would be because it's uh, it, there's, there is excavation underneath, partial excavation underneath that deck.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, so we will take this into committee for comments or a motion.
I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve this application um with condition of uh the staff report and um also to make a condition that the back uh wall, the, the covered porch is not covered, there is no intention to cover or um put up walls on um to close in the covered porch. I think there's another condition too. And also forestry condition one.
Do we have a seconder for that motion? Miss, um, Member Sankar, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous, uh, motion carried, and your application's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item twelve. Oh, great, deferred as well, sorry. So that concludes the morning session. We will adjourn for, how much time do we want? Do we want an hour or forty-five minutes? Forty-five minutes.
I'm okay with forty-five minutes, yeah.
Thank you. So we will resume at two forty-five.